So, welcome to council. I'm in the gallery, welcome to our city council, meeting of city council. If we can call the meeting to order, I'd like to begin by thanking our media partners today for broadcasting our meeting and all of our print partners for being here to write about what we say and do. Being Canada 150 year, as you're aware, I'm going to be reading a historical fact at every city council meeting until we hit Canada 150. And tonight's historical fact is, the village of Sault Ste. Marie was incorporated as a town in 1887 with a population of 1,600 people. The first town council meeting was held on May 23rd, 1887. William Brown was the first mayor, and Mayor Brown was a blacksmith. His combined home and blacksmith shop was located on Pym Street, just north of where the Algonquin Hotel is today. So that is our moment, our history moment for the month. Mr. Clerk, if you could please start the meeting?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under Agenda Item 1, Adoption of Minutes, a motion by councillors Spaddan Myers, resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting of 2017 will 508 be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
Under Agenda Item 3, Declarations of Pecuniary Interest.
Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pecuniary interest 6.7, police contingency reserve espoused employed by police services, and the municipal law enforcement officer 6.22, also related bylaw with that as well.
Anybody else?
Sorry, I'm late. It was the one where the contract was awarded to reconstruction as their client.
And the consent agenda. Yep, I think it was at Grace Street or Franklin. We'll note it when we get to it, Counselor Shoemaker.
And there was an associated bylaw with it as well.
Yeah. It was either 6.13. Anybody else? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk?
Under Agenda Item 4, proof agendas presented, a motion by councillors Bruny and Hollingsworth, resolved that the agenda and addendum for the 2017-05-29 city council meeting as presented be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
Under Agenda, Section 5, 5.1, Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Awareness Month, Troy and Annette Chandler are in attendance.
Troy? Are you coming up? Welcome to council.
Thank you. Mayor Christian, members of city council, everyone here, those watching from home, good afternoon. My name is Troy Chandler, and I'm here with my wife, Annette. We are here as representatives for the Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Association of Ontario, and on behalf of everyone and their families in Sault Ste. Marie and surrounding area who are affected by these two conditions. We want to thank council for taking the time to declare June 2017 as Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Awareness Month. Hydrocephalus, also known as water on the brain, can lead to swelling and can permanently damage the brain, causing both physical and mental growth. Spina bifida is a birth defect in which either the brain and spine, or only the spine, failed to develop properly in the womb. More than 85% of children with spina bifida have hydrocephalus. Both of these disorders are disabling lifelong and present daily hardships. I was diagnosed with hydrocephalus in 1994 at the age of 28. I've had numerous surgeries and seizures along the way. The unpredictability of the condition has caused lots of emotional and strain on my family. We were determined to see if there were others in our community whose lives have been affected by hydrocephalus and spina bifida, and lend a hand. The Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Association of Ontario, also known as SBNH, has been doing just that. They have helped a great deal of people, and we are forever grateful. They are a registered charitable organization, proud of its 40-year history of delivering programs and services that improve the quality of life of childrens and adults with hydrocephalus and spina bifida through research, awareness, care, and advocacy. In 2012, we created Troy's Trail, an annual walk to create awareness and to raise some well-needed funds for SBNH. The walk brings us together for mutual support, encouragement, comfort, and friendship. We are holding Troy's Trail once again this year, scheduled for Saturday, June 10th, at the south end of Clerk Park by the Yacht Gallery. This is our sixth year celebrating the event, and we do truly believe we're making a difference. We have been collecting pledges and will do so up until the time of the walk. Every dollar raised goes towards the Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Association of Ontario. SBNH does not receive any government funding, so anything that we members can do goes a long, long way. Troy's Trail has been a very rewarding experience. We're seeing it work, and we are so proud of it. Our network of people in the Sioux with these two conditions and their families with the awareness that we have created has really grown. We hold a special bond, we have a special bond, and now have someone to turn to whenever the need arises. We look forward to this walk every year, so come on out, June 10th, rain or shine, it could just be the support you're looking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I have a proclamation here, Troy. Where spina bifida is a birth defect that develops within the first four weeks of pregnancy, resulting in varying degrees of permanent neurological damage, and whereas hydrocephalus is an excessive accumulation of fluid in the brain, which may be present at birth or may develop at any stage later in life, and whereas there is no cure for either of these conditions that result in varying degrees of disability, whereas the Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Association of Ontario serves people with spina bifida and hydrocephalus, their families in the public, and whereas health candidates proclaim June as Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Awareness Month, and whereas there are many people who are not aware of the association, or that it offers support, information, and education programs, and funds research to find ways to prevent and treat these conditions, and whereas the association encourages all Ontarians to learn more about these conditions and to appreciate the challenges faced by individuals affected by them. Now therefore, I, Christian Provan Zan, was mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim the month of June to be Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Awareness Month in the city of Sault Ste. Marie, and I urge all citizens to give full consideration and attention to the Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Association of Ontario for their work on behalf of those with spina bifida and hydrocephalus and their families. Troy, I'd also like to thank you and your wife for the good work you do here in the community to raise awareness and support people who are dealing with these health issues.
Thank you very much, it means a lot.
Thank you.
Under Agenda Item 5.2, Why Do You Love Canada Elementary School Contest, and we have Alexander Webb in attendance.
So Alex, come up to the microphone. So we're doing a Why Do You Love Canada contest, and we have asked a bunch of kids from around the community to let us know why they love the country, and you'll be seeing one of these children at a council meeting on a going-forward basis, and Alex is our first person here to present, so I want to welcome you to council. You can introduce yourself and tell us all why you love Canada.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My name is Alex Webb, I'm from HM Robbins, and I'm in grade five. I love Canada because it is a free country, maple syrup, which I love on my pancakes. There are a lot of school choices, it's very peaceful, it is a massive country. We've written to leave, come back, and stay. There is very good healthcare, and if you don't know that, ask my dad. It is beautiful and secure, there are four seasons, anyone can be in government. Oh, and by the way, when am I getting my job? When's my job? What's the offer? The beautiful maple leaves on the trees, the Canadian flag, there's a lot of fish in places, you have the right to travel, and there are a lot of wildlife. Seen a bear in my backyard once, I was terrified. Lakes, rivers, and mountains. Happy 150th birthday, Canada.
You are quite a character, Alex, so thank you for your submission, and your brother's here with you, what's his name?
James.
James, well, thank you for coming too. So thank you very much, Alex.
Under Agenda Item 5.3, Downtown Association Strategic Plan, Brian Hayes, Chair of the Downtown Association, is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, your worship. I think, if you don't mind, I'm just going to move this standard away.
Yep, yep. That was there just for Alexander.
The young man did say anybody could be in politics, I guess we're all living proof, aren't we? Thank you for the opportunity to be here. First, I'd like to acknowledge our board members, Paul Scornianke, Frank Taconi, Grace Tridico, Joe Bishalia, Christie Sostero, Angela Romano, Ross Romano, Rory Ring, and I'd also like to acknowledge Josh and all the hard work that he did as our executive for the Downtown Association on this plan. It was a significant process with numerous stakeholders. I won't go through the stakeholders, but a list will be provided. We did consult with our downtown councillors, and Counselor Nero and Counselor Turco. I believe, your worship, that you were included in the consultation process as well.
I wasn't.
So we thank you for your input, we thank the community for its input. The overarching theme that has come out of this is what's called, "We wanted to create empower," so we wanted to have our members have the ability to be self-empowered. And within that, there were seven themes, and tonight we're going to discuss briefly those seven themes or those seven pillars, being engagement, marketing, passion, opportunity, welcoming, economic, and relevance. Just a quick review in terms of what is a BIA, our Business Improvement Area runs from Queen Street to Dennis Street, so it is the businesses simply along Queen Street. We're an organization that allows businesspeople and commercial property owners and tenants to join together to organize, finance, and facilitate physical improvements and promote economic development in our BIA with the support of the city of Sault Ste. Marie. We are a member of the Ontario Business Improvement Area, association of which there are 216 member communities in Ontario, and there are 308 BIAs in Ontario, representing in excess of 60,000 businesses across the province. And on their website, they have just released a paper called Return on Investments of BIA's Report. I encourage council to read it, I'm going to encourage our board to read it, it is significant. The first pillar I want to talk about under the empower is engagement, and under engagement we have four initiatives, priority initiative to create an exclusive member online portal, to ensure informal opportunities exist for all members to communicate and connect, to identify the priority needs of our members, and to measure engagement success. On the final, second-last page of our report that council has, will be our measurement processes, so that'll give you an idea for each of these, how we actually measure our success, so I'm not going to go into them at this stage of the game. Our second pillar speaks to marketing. Our priority initiatives are to conduct market research to activate the downtown, and with the expected outcome being economic stability and prosperity. Our second initiative identified was to review best practices, competitive analysis, and benchmarking, and obviously, we want to create a successful downtown economic engine. Third priority is to create a branding initiative, and I believe Counselor Christian mentioned that at one of the council meetings, so that is actually one of the priorities under our marketing initiative. Our fourth initiative is to promote vacant properties. We do see a role for the DTA in terms of promoting vacant properties downtown, and our expected outcome, while we know it will be difficult to achieve, but certainly we're going to work towards a zero vacancy rate in our downtown area. And our last priority is to create a downtown that is more active, with the expected outcome of vibrant downtown, obviously with more people and more opportunity. Our third pillar is, and this is a board attitude as well, is we want to instill in our members and the community at large, passion. And in order to do that, we want to make sure that we're a consolidated voice for a solution-based approach to the redevelopment of downtown, and we want to make downtown an outstanding Our next is opportunity. Under opportunity, our priority initiative is to work with the city of Sault Ste. Marie and stakeholders with an expected outcome of increased events and an extended season to bring more people downtown. Our second priority is to seek more funding opportunities, and our third priority is to partner with the community to advance the activation of downtown, and really, this opportunity pillar is all about partnering. Under our welcoming experience, we have five priority initiatives, the first being to lead the development of a mobile and connected downtown for all ages, with an expected outcome of removal of barriers, red tape, and a streamlining of processes. We want to assist in the implementation of a downtown trolley that was identified within the city's own downtown strategic plan. As a matter of fact, when we started this process, we actually hoped that we would actually complement it with the downtown strategic plan and the community improvement initiative. We didn't know the outcome, obviously, we hoped, and fortunately, our plan does complement those two plans. We want to make sure we're using all funding opportunities available to enhance downtown, to make downtown a more visually attractive downtown, parking improvements and beautification. Our fourth priority is to develop a market-based approach to enhance service levels, hours of operation, accessibility, and tourism services, and obviously, the expected outcome is increased positive response from local consumers and tourists. And our final priority initiative under welcoming is to resolve issues of parking and maintenance. Under economic opportunity, our first priority initiative is to develop a memorandum of understanding with the city of Sault Ste. Marie, the Economic Development Corporation, and Sault Ste. Marie Public Utilities Commission. The expected outcome is to have defined roles, relationships, and responsibilities. We partner on a number of initiatives, we want to just have some clarity around those initiatives to make sure that they're efficient. Second priority is to provide a means to all the membership to enhance their business, and the third priority is to provide opportunity for all members to take advantage of the activation of downtown. And by all members, we don't just mean retail members, obviously, there's retail members, but there's also commercial members, there's residential members, and industrial members. Under relevance, we want to make sure that we as an organization are relevant to the benefit of our members and to the community at large. And under relevance, we've identified four key priorities, actually, five key priorities. We want to advance the Downtown Association's strategic plan, mission, and vision. I'm not sure if this is the first strategic plan for the DTA, but it very, very well may be. We want to bring prioritization to the issues that affect the well-being of downtown. We want to be able to define value and return on investment, and that paper I mentioned earlier, once we all go over that, I think that will help us understand what an ROI is, and how meaningful a BIA is to downtown and to the community at large. As a fourth priority, we want to investigate extending our downtown association boundaries. It's not a number-one priority at this stage of the game, and before we would do that, we would obviously consult with our members and, again, stakeholder groups and the community at large. And first and foremost, we want to make sure we're doing the best we can with our existing boundaries, but we will investigate expanding those boundaries. And the final priority initiative is that the Downtown Association will engage the First Nations in the fulfillment of its mission, vision, and values. And in terms of our mission, I didn't mention that on the first page, but our mission, the Sault Ste. Marie Downtown Association will deliver value to its membership, be a catalyst for and support them in creating a self-empowered downtown that thrives through the activation of its spaces, places, and people. Your second-last slide that you have, I've already spoken to, and that's in terms of how we're going to measure ourselves, I won't get into that, but we need to know that it's working, and we do intend to be very aggressive in measuring our results. And finally, as part of our strategic planning process, we developed our vision, which is that downtown Sault Ste. Marie, a unique place to experience a dynamic community that is vibrant, healthy, and a prosperous destination where people want to be and want to invest. And we have presented this strategic plan to our board members, I would say it was overwhelmingly supported, and with council support, with the partnership with the city of Sault Ste. Marie, we will move forward, and we thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Counselor Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good job, Brian, thank you, nice to see you here.
Happy birthday, Counselor Myers.
Oh, gee, thank you. 29 and holding, Counselor Hayes, oh, former Counselor Hayes, thank you. I returned to the Sioux November of 89, and in my 14 years at EDC as manager of marketing tourism, and now 11 years on council, I have to say that I have never seen such an extensive and thorough planning process for our downtown, both on the city side with our city staff and Torrey and planning department and all that they're doing, and the downtown. You're a very vibrant organization, and I know that for all of us, born and raised here especially, but those who have chosen to make Sault Ste. Marie your home, I think we all get that the downtown is key. We are very fortunate in Sault Ste. Marie to have the kind of downtown we have, and I can remember when I first came back in 89, there was a lot of controversy around station mall being located downtown on our waterfront. And in truth, I have to say that I think that has been a very helpful thing, so instead of people looking for retail or services having to choose, I'm going to go out somewhere to a mall, which happens in some other northern cities, I can go downtown and I can also include and be part of downtown. And I know that for years, there was, when I was at EDC, we had different planning things. I think you're right, Brian, this is the first time it's been a good strategic planning by the downtown itself, but I think what's most exciting here is you've always needed a champion, because the downtown businesses, some of them come and go, some have been there forever, we did 100-year certificates back in 2012, but the board members come and go and so on, but you've got the city staff aligned, I think, with you and the planning department, and I think there's an excitement and an energy that I've not seen before, so I'm just wanting to commend you and the board and our own staff, later on the agenda, we've got that coming up as well. It's an exciting time, and it's a lot of potential. When I was selling my home and looking for a place to live, I looked at downtown, I looked at one of Peter's apartments above what was Valentino Furs at the time, and quite frankly, that's eight years ago, as a single woman on my own, I was not comfortable that I would live down there by myself, because I thought, what happens after the hours when everybody closes up? I didn't feel that I would be safe. There's a lot that's changed just in the eight years, but I think a critical piece is as we can move forward with the residential component in the downtown, that's going to drive a lot of these other things. Rick Nero and I are part of the Queen Street Cruise, I think we all have a responsibility to try and think about the downtown and what it is, we have a jewel, so thank you for all your work, and obviously, those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, our pleasure as a board. Counselor Butland?
Yes, could see that you're still involved, Brian, good to see you again.
Thanks, Stephen.
And echoing Counselor Myers' comments, more of a comprehensive view, when I read the report, I honed in on, I said, "trolley." Is that something you anticipate soon or later, and what do you envision? We're not going back to the streetcar days, but I hope it's not just the city bus going back and forth. Have you got any elaboration on the trolley?
You'll notice, specific to the trolley, we will not be the lead on that, the city will be the lead on that, it is within the city's strategic plan, and I think by us recognizing it, we're endorsing that component of the city's strategic plan, and we will be willing to partner in whatever way our members see fit. So ultimately, we're accountable to our members, and this is something, once again, that our members support. What the end result will be, it's probably premature to say right now, Counselor Butland.
Okay, so, yes, it does beg partnership. To whom do I address the question? The city staff of the trolley. Mr. McConnell, maybe?
He would likely be the best person to speak to that, because his conversation, I know he's had a number of times. Mr. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Counselor Butland, the city did undertake, and we had a lot of help from tourism Sault Ste. Marie a few years ago, feasibility study to look at the viability of doing a trolley in the downtown area, and it is viable, we were proposing a pilot program for two years, it would be operated by our own transit department, and that study has kind of resurrected itself now. At the time, I don't think there was a lot of enthusiasm to put any money into it, but with the Downtown Association, their plans, the new development that we've had in the downtown, and possible support from a couple of the major tourism players in the downtown, we could certainly sit down and take a look at that again. It wouldn't take a great deal of work to update it.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for the Downtown Association? Mr. Hayes?
Thank you very kindly.
Thank you for your presentation, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under Agenda Item 5.4, Historic Sites Board Annual Report. Report, Kathy Fisher is in attendance. This relates to the Agenda Item 7.2.1 on the regular portion of the agenda, Report of the Curator, Stone House is up for council's consideration, and a motion by Councilors Fatta and Myers resolved that the Report of the Curator Old Stone House concerning the annual report 2016 for the Irma Tinger Clerk National Historic Site be received as information.
Welcome to council, Ms. Fisher. Where are your hands?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Provinciano, and city councillors. As per the bylaw 2001 229, Section 6, the Historic Sites Board, a local board of council, is required to submit an annual report to council. At our May tenth meeting, the final draft of this report that you now have for the Irma Tinger Clerk National Historic Site was approved. Not included in this report is their financial information, as the accounts are within the corporation's audited financial reports. However, on behalf of the Historic Sites Board, it should be noted that board and staff were able to stay under budget for 2016. In order to meet the standards of the Community Museum Operating Grant and the Ministry of Culture, this report will also accompany the annual application to the province for the operational grant request. Our opening of the Heritage Discovery Centre in 2014 enabled the site to operate year-round. This provided us with more options for programming, services, and revenue streams. We can boast in 2016 that this resulted in the highest visitation in a decade. Visitation is not just the general visitor coming in our front door. As you can see and in your reports, the general visitation and our student curriculum numbers are approximately the same every year, and we continue to hold at this level since the old days of just having the Old Stone House on the property. But what we do now to increase numbers and higher revenues is various programming opportunities and tourism packages. This year, over 5,000 attended our special events, from the winter months in our new programming with Fridays by the Fire, to the big event of Fall Rendezvous. These are all attended by local residents. Fourteen hundred guests come through our heritage culinary experiences. This number doubled since the last, in the last two years, with the Group of Seven themed dinners and featuring our Theatre in Motion group, a local group here in Sault Ste. Marie, presenting moments in Algoma. Group of Seven is well-attended by companies coming on group bus tours by Rhodes Scholars. This year, we even are proud to offer it through Ontario Tourism Marketing, OTMPC's promotion website, groupofsevencontinues.com. We've had a great year in forming special partnerships. New partnerships formed in 2016 with our Junior Gardener Program, and yes, that's a 500-pound pumpkin grown on site. So big, the children actually climbed in it. A sensitive egg hunt with the Autism Society. Our suffragette commemoration last year with the Zonta Club, who not only were the suffragettes, but sponsored the films and event for the Commemorative Weekend. And our youth from White Pines, who step up to the plate, especially for Fall Rendezvous last year. These are all great community learning opportunities, and we have all grown from them. Every year, we're delighted to showcase the site to special guests and to house special events and exhibits. Last year, the Lieutenant Governor of Ontario visited and experienced our Group of Seven program along with many of you. Last fall, as we started our approach and the road to 2017, we brought in a traveling exhibition on 1867 from the Museum of History. In keeping up with the times, the Old Stone House has progressed. Change is good, they tell me. I can't do it. So, in 2016, I learned how to establish social media, go online and register for programs, and we have also taken over the operations of our gift shop, and we have hosted many different venue rentals. The eight-member Historic Sites Board volunteered approximately 500 hours, along with 32 other volunteers, contributing over 1,785 hours. This is record-breaking. So your full annual report is provided to you with a lot more detail. The information that I'm not presenting formally tonight is on collection management, asset management, and maintenance of the two oldest stone buildings northwest of Toronto. But I did want to bring forward some of the highlights of the past year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You obviously have some questions here. We'll start with Counselor Hoopanen, then Counselor Hollingsworth.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I don't have any questions. I do want to acknowledge Kathy Fisher, though. I had the privilege of sitting on the board for the historic site, and it was a wonderful, enlightening two years. And the work that Kathy puts into her job and the events that come out of the center was just amazing. And I just have to acknowledge you, Kathy, and thank you for all of the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hoopanen. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, but I want to basically echo what my council may hear. It's incredible what you do, what your board and volunteers. If anyone has not had a chance to go to one of your themed dinners, or to fire chat and so forth, please put it on your calendar and do it. I just give you so much, I don't know, respect and creativity that you have shown everyone, your whole team. It's just marvelous. It's a gem, what you have built with your board and your volunteers. So congratulations. It is one of the, we have a lot of great tourist attractions, and this one is top-notch. And the Group of Seven, well, well done. And when I went through your annual report, I noticed that you've had a lot of groups coming through. And I think I saw mention of a group from Upper Michigan. I'm not sure, but I thought I saw something like that. And so how are you reaching out to our friends in Michigan?
We have alliances with some of the museum associations. So they're through that. Also, we're still connected through the War of 1812. It just seems to never end. And...
So it keeps on going.
And then, so right through, because of Mackinac and everything. So the Michigan Tourism, Michigan Reenactors Group, and also Tourism Sault Ste. Marie and Algoma Country do a great, fantastic job at promoting our bus tours. And so we do get people in, and the Rhodes Scholars come in from Michigan, and they come from all over the United States and arrive in Traverse City, and then they bus them up for these Group of Seven.
Marvelous. I'm looking forward to next year's annual report, because I know you're going to have a lot more wonderful ideas that you're going to share with us. And I'm going to put a plug in. Again, fundraising efforts, I know that it's important for your group. And if any one is interested in donating, I'm sure they can pick up the phone or walk down and see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kath. Good presentation, as always. And for some of us who've sat here, look around the table. Counselor Turco sat on the Historic Sites Board. I sat on the Historic Sites Board. Counselor Hoopanen, as she mentioned. I believe Counselor Shoemaker's there now. And it is really an opportunity to get to know about this attraction and this jewel that we have that's an asset of the city's. It's very, it's really a gift that we own and operate this center. And we who have sat on that board are acutely aware of the challenges that are faced. So I'm going to ask you now, Kathy, ahead of budget time and ahead of a presentation that might come later in the year, this is an opportunity, a facility that's unusual for us to have. It's a real revenue-generating opportunity. The more we put into it, how many staff do you have right now operating the site?
Two full-time.
Two full-time staff. And...
We do have part-time, so we...
How many part-time?
Three.
Three part-time. And a lot of volunteer hours, as has been highlighted. Counsel, I think we really have to, at times, from time to time, we get these discussions around this table about the cultural facilities in this community. And, you know, there seems to, sometimes it comes up that there's a hesitancy to invest in them. This is a place where the more we invest, the more we can make, quite frankly. We have a retail store. We have an operation that's revenue-generating. And I was on the board when we decided, the former members of council that were there at the time took the brave step of deciding to build the Heritage Discovery Center. And we have never looked back. And so we're in our third full year since opening the center, I believe, Kathy, the Heritage Discovery Center?
Yeah, we opened in June 2014.
Fourteen, yeah.
So, yeah.
So we've had fifteen, sixteen, and coming up seventeen. So, and we opened in July, I think, in 2014. So, really, counsel, please, if you have not got into this site and are not familiar with it, please do, especially before budget time again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Myers. Any other questions or comments for Counselor Fatta?
Let me just ask one. Great question. You mentioned that some of the traffic that you've seen coming from cruise ships, can you expand on that a little bit as to the more or less approach to increasing that traffic?
Well, the cruise ships are booked in through numerous partners. So we actually usually get the list, and they have worked with us so that passengers can come to the site with their lanyards from the cruise ship. And we know when they're coming, and we provide a program to them. So this year, we have more cruise ships coming into Sault Ste. Marie than we ever have, with two cruise lines guaranteed. And so it's really nice on those days to, you know, we see three to 500 visitors.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fisher. We certainly appreciate your very significant efforts.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Next Agenda Item is also on the regular agenda, 7.3.1 Bike Path on Second Line. The Report of the Director of Engineering is attached for the consideration of council. A motion by Councilors Fatta and Hollingsworth resolved that the Report of Director of Engineering concerning the bike path on Second Line be received as information. We also have Andre Riopel here.
What we'll do, councils, will, Mr. Riopel asked to make some representations, so Andre, come to the microphone.
Eric?
Oh, sorry. I understood, Andre, you were asking to make the representations. But in any event, we'll hear the representations, and then we'll pull the report up, and we'll discuss and debate the report after the representations.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Provinciano, council. My name is Eric Eddy. I am current president of the Sault Cycling Club.
Welcome to council, Mr. Eddy.
Pardon me?
Welcome to council.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to take a minute to thank council for your efforts over the past ten years, building and developing the cycling infrastructure that we currently have in Sault Ste. Marie today. As we move forward, I'm very excited about the future of cycling in Sault Ste. Marie and the ability to make it a great location for cyclists to live. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Riopel. He is a director of the Sault Cycling Club and a longtime advocate of cycling in Sault Ste. Marie.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm sure you're familiar with the petition. Just some, a little bit of background, we'll make it quick. Basically, when the Second Line corridor was getting resurfaced, or planned to be resurfaced, and also the possibility of, or the creation of a sidewalk on the south side between Great Northern Road and Old Garden River Road, I just thought it would be a good way to solve what has become a big problem for active transportation folks on that corridor. It's very dangerous. So, and it was a little bit of summary. So what I was surprised is because initially, I thought that a multi-use path would be a good use of funding, because it's less expensive to build, and also better for not just cyclists, but people with mobility devices. And there's certainly a strong need for that in that area. One of the points that was made is that we have to understand the Cycling Master Plan did not identify that area specifically for a facility. However, I'd like to point out that the cycling plan is ten years old, and I think that the Active Transportation Plan and the Transportation Master Plan usually get updated every ten years or so. And on that point, I think that everybody would have to agree that that area has changed dramatically in the last ten years. I know personally, I use that section of the road every day on my commute. And with the addition of the liquor store and the closing of the other two liquor stores, and the addition of the grocery store at Walmart, now they're building Michael's. And as it goes on, there's been a huge growth of commercial activity there. And then when, and I saw a dramatic increase in the, in the traffic volumes in that area, and also see a dramatic increase in the number of people walking on mobility device and bicycles trying to access that area. And I think the future is, it's still growing, and we're going to see even more desire to have appropriate infrastructure for people who are not driving. And it's basically, I think it's become, you know, whether we want it or not, it's probably become the primary commercial zone in a city. So it's a, it's a huge draw for all sorts of people to go there. The other thing, too, is it's an area that's surrounded by a very densely populated neighborhood. So there's some connectivity here that would be desirable for all, not just for people who are driving, but for everybody else also that's trying to go there. And also, this area is, the Cara community has probably the city's highest density of mobility devices. And I think that's why some of these folks here are here tonight, because what we're proposing is not just good for cyclists, it's also good for people in wheelchairs and other types of mobility devices. And I don't know, but I've seen a lot of people do, trying to negotiate that area. And I've seen some pretty hair-raising sort of situations, pretty scary stuff. But, and I think that's a reflection of infrastructure. And I also, I so appreciate that the report from Mr. Elliott suggested that if we're going to solve, or if we're going to look at that area, we need to look at the whole thing. So I just wanted to show you a few pictures, just to kind of refresh your memory about what we're talking about here. So I'll call this AT for Active Transportation Access to the Walmart Block. I'm not trying to promote Walmart here, but I'll call it that, because I think that's the main retail establishment there. The first, just this picture, if you look at the sidewalk on the south side of Second Line, so there is a plan this summer to build a sidewalk. And you can see on the first bottom-left picture there, that's the existing condition. And if you proceed east, as soon as you cross Old Garden River Road, you see a sidewalk with a small paved boulevard. That sidewalk is, not a lot of cyclists go there, because they tend to use the hub trail, which crosses Old Garden River Road at that intersection. And eastbound cyclists will tend to either go on the path that, as, I mean, sorry, the hub trail traverses the, where the fire hall is, and then, or they'll go on the north side where there's a better facility. So this is looking at the north sidewalk, which I think would be probably a better spot. I've circled three areas here, just to show where the pictures are taken. So this is the picture of the existing condition, right in front of the Walmart entrance. And as you can see, the asphalt, not the asphalt, but the asphalt's in pretty rough shape, and the boulevard is pretty broken up. And I understand that's going to be addressed this summer. But I think that if you look at that sidewalk and you continue further east, that is, as soon as you cross Old Garden River Road, then the nature of the sidewalk changes dramatically to a wide paved boulevard with some utility poles in the middle and a sidewalk on the other side. And there's a lot of cyclists, actually, who ride on the paved boulevard there. It's... It's, it's actually way better than running on the road. That road is very high, high-volume, big trucks, it's not a nice place. So most people who have to go in that area by bike will, will ride on that, on that boulevard. And it's, it works quite well, it's not a problem. But really, what we like is, this is what we'll call the first-class active transportation infrastructure. As soon as you cross Pine Street where St. Mary's is, you see what, this is a first-class multi-use path that accommodates and makes everybody happy, people in wheelchairs, bicycles and pedestrians. And the irony is that, that first-class facility is where very little people need it. It would be nice to have that where, where most people are going. So that's why I showed this, and I think this is sort of what we're looking at. Then I just want to, just one more quick comment for two minutes. This is actually a quote, I'll give that to Mr. McConnell, because there was, when we're looking at pedestrian traffic and when you're looking at building university campuses, he said, "One of the best ways to do it is don't do anything for one year and then look at the footprints. Look where people are walking, and then that's where you're going to put the sidewalks." So what I did is I went around the block and I took pictures of footprints. So in the southeast corner, that's where Valerushin is, there is a, I'll take some credit for that. We have a active transportation, a nice entranceway there and paved path going into the business. And coming out the backside that connects to the Walmart block, there's a very well-used trail, cyclists, pedestrians. So I had no issues with people using the commercial property, my commercial property, to access the, the rest of the commercial block. What's interesting is when you look along the back of the building between, that's Walmart, you see there on the, on the right corner. And, and you see there's a very well-beaten path between Walmart and Home Depot. So people are basically using that as a corridor to, to walk and to get to Walmart or to go into the back businesses. And then if you go to the other corner of the property, I call it the northeast corner, that's the corner where Home Depot is. And I remember that was studied and for some reason, there was talk about putting a sidewalk there or an access point for pedestrians. And for some reason, it didn't happen. But you can certainly appreciate that there's a strong need for pedestrian access at that corner. When you look at how well-used that path, that basically goes around the fence that was put there to stop people from walking there. So to me, that is a, an example of where the planning process seems to fail to reflect the underground need of the citizens. Because people, you can't stop water or pedestrians from going where they have to go. And what's sad about this is that we should be able to facilitate that. And I think there's a strong commitment from this council to, to do that whenever possible. And this is a great way to demonstrate this. The other one that is in place, but has never been improved, is what I call the northwest corner of the property, where there's an existing right-of-way owned by the city that connects Terrence Avenue to, right behind the LCBO. I travel along that path several times a week just to access the grocery store and the businesses in that area. And also, it's on my commute to work and it avoids Great Northern Road. And it's well-used by a lot of people, it's not maintained. I believe it would be an opportunity here, again, looking at the big picture, to improve that path, to make it more safer and more accessible. Anyways, to conclude, I think that what has been proposed tonight is to have a city council approve, a look at this whole section to improve the access for people who are on wheelchairs and bicycles and walking. And I think that whatever study needs to consider the whole block and also consider it to, whenever we look at large commercial and busy sites, we need to, you know, when you look at infrastructure for walkers, it's a lot different and a lot less intrusive than access for motorists. Pedestrians and cyclists are very easy to accommodate. And they will, they don't, they don't need a lot of space and it doesn't cost a lot of money. You just need to think about it, you just need to plan it, you need to look at the whole process carefully. And I think it's important here, too, to have consistent design standards. When we look at the sidewalk on the, on the north side going from a first-class to a kind of a hodgepodge paved boulevard sidewalk to a sidewalk with grass that's narrow close to the road. I think it would be really good to have the same standard all the way across. And that would be what I would call first-class, and I think people here would be very happy to see that. And I think also is, is the idea to integrate whatever plan we do here to look at, at a citywide with the whole of cycling master plan. Because I think this is one of the issues, I think it's been addressed, because it's been a big change there. We just need to get current and up-to-date, and I think we'd avoid the sort of, trying to fix something quickly at the end like this. And I, and I really, this is another quote that I attribute to Mr. McConnell, because good planning requires meaningful public engagement. And I believe this is the process of public engagement, is what we're doing here tonight. And I hope that council will support a study to look at this holistically and come up with a plan that will be better than what I'm proposing. And thank you very much.
So just so I'm clear, Mr. Riopel, the, the staff report is here for information. But what we're doing in our project is we're, we're putting a road on the south side where there is, sorry, we're putting a sidewalk on the south side where there is no sidewalk. And in discussing, so having a discussion with Mr. McConnell and Mr. Elliott on this, there's really no objection to that. It's a good thing to put the sidewalk in where there is no sidewalk. What I think I'm hearing you say is we should study putting a multi-use path on the north side of second line.
Right. Well, I think even better than that is the fact that we need to look at the whole thing and then come up with a plan that is going to put everything together. And I, I'm not disputing the fact that, like, the reason that we suggested putting a multi-use path on this, instead of a sidewalk...
Because we're doing that.
Was expedient, right.
Yeah.
So I know they're doing that, but I think, as you saw, the condition of the sidewalk on the north side, it certainly needs to be fixed. And if they're going to fix the sidewalk on the north side, before you spend any money to do that, I think we should do a plan to make sure that we do something once and not have to redo it again later on.
So there's really no objection to the sidewalk being built on the south side, because then we'd have a complete...
Not unless there is, of course, if the, if the active transportation infrastructure is on the north side, that solves the problem. I think better than the one on the south side is what, yes. So I, I agree with you. So you don't need to put it on the south side, but I just, the reason I'm suggesting, was suggesting that was because we were going to be there anyways. So I figured, why not put a paved path? Because the other thing, too, is that I, this didn't come up till with the people in wheelchairs and mobility devices. They don't like sidewalks, they like paved paths because of the, it's, it's rough. And I believe that these, these folks here are, can Andrew actually wipe out the curb cuts and everything? And I know you're familiar because you, you went for a ride. And, and I think it would be a good exercise for anybody who's reviewing that as a planner or an engineer, go in a wheelchair and go for a ride around the block. And you know what? You're going to feel very different when you come back and you'll certainly be empathize with people who are, who are, and I would applaud the Counsel Shoemaker, who took his time to come and take a walk around the block with me. And I think he, he saw things that you don't see from a car. And I think he appreciates, like, what we're talking about and why we, we only see the problem until you're in those shoes, so to speak. So, yeah, I think what, what Mr. Elliott was proposing, I think is very agreeable to us with a study. But I would like to believe that any study doesn't sit on a shelf. I think it's, it's...
You're, you're, we're getting ahead of ourselves here, Andre.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Just to drill down on that, because i- if that's what's being asked for and you're agreeable to that, it's pretty consistent with Mr. Elliott's recommendation here. Because this tender is going to be back to us in one meeting to approve, and there's no way a study is going to be done between those two periods. So I think it's going to be that a road is, sorry, a sidewalk is built on the south side. But the larger question is, is can we do a study properly to make sure that we have active transportation in that area right?
Correct.
And that's what you're suggesting.
Correct.
Okay, that motion isn't before council, but I expect it might come from the floor. In any event, now that we've had the presentation, thank you for your time, Mr. Riopel. We appreciate it. Counsel, do you have any questions of staff? We'll start with Counsel Butland.
Well, it's more of a comment, Mr....
Okay.
Well, first of all, Andre is obviously quite a spokesman for cyclists in this community. And I, he may not appreciate this, but he has mellowed a whole lot. And a few years ago, he never would have said, when I talked to him Saturday, he said, you know, "The study, and I accept, we should take a holistic approach." And I was, I was said, "Well, that's, that's absolutely fantastic, and it's good to see that you've got some supporters out this evening." Related, but not related, this Saturday morning, Andre was on a bicycle, not surprising. But at the opening of the, the Bicycle Pump Park at Esposito Park. And it was tremendous to see a whole lot of young people riding donated bikes into a neighborhood that probably sort of needed them. It was very refreshing, and Andre was just like a young kid out there. So, thank you very, very much.
Okay, so we have Counsel Hollingsworth.
Thank you, these are just comments as well. Two comments. Again, well done. This is what it's all about, this is what community is about. Having you come here, you taking your time with such great support, taking those pictures. That just shows that you care about the community, along with the others that are sitting here with you. So, well done. This is exactly what community is all about. Bicycling, gosh, we have that 10-year plan, yes, there's some tweaking that may be done, but let's keep on cycling forward. But I also want to use this opportunity to talk about what Counsel Butland just said about the, the park, Pump Park. It was wonderful over the weekend that those individuals, those young kids that can't afford a bicycle, received a bicycle.
Thank you.
Again, that is positive, and that is what community is about. Keep on doing what you're doing. And thank you for taking the time to bring it to our attention. And hopefully, it's on our radar, and let's see what we can do.
I'm not going anywhere.
Counsel Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am prepared to move a motion to, in effect, well, I've got a motion drafted, perhaps it's easier just to read it.
Why don't you, why don't, do we deal with the first motion, the first report, and then this motion? Should we not deal with the main motion?
Yes.
So why don't we do it that? It seems like we'll have a vote in the main motion, then we'll let you read your motion and we'll, we'll go from there.
Perfect.
So any more questions in the main motion? All in favor? Main motion's carried. Counsel Shoemaker, do you want to table the, whatever it is you've drafted?
Yes, so...
On your phone?
Yes.
You can just email it up to the clerk.
I will, right after I read it, if it's agreeable. So resolve that staff examine funding options to update the cycling master plan with a specific view to improving active transportation in the area of second line from Great Northern Road to Old Garden River Road and on Great Northern Road from second line to Terrence Avenue.
Are you seconding that, Counsel Huppinen?
Yes, I am.
Staff, do you have any comments on that motion, since you haven't, you hadn't, generally speaking, you see our motions before they're tabled at council? Is there anything in that motion that you think is going to be problematic? Any questions in the motion? All in favor of the motion? Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Riopel.
Thank you.
So, Counsel Shoemaker, if you could email that, if you could email that motion up to the clerk, that would be very helpful to us.
Yes, I will, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're close enough to 5:30 to continue on with the one planning item that we have on tonight. Under 7.6.1, A-2-12Z, 413, 417, and 421 Old Garden River Road. Motion by Councillors Fatah and Myers, resolve that the report of the senior planner concerning rezoning application A217Z be received and that council postpone this matter indefinitely.
Maybe we can just give the, the chambers a moment to clear, Mr. McConnell, and then we'll go to you. And you could give everybody at home just a summary, and then we'll, we'll go from there. Okay, Mr. McConnell? Just want to give a summary of what this matter's about. I know it's been before us a few times.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an application for approval for three fourplexes on Old Garden River Road. It's been deferred several times at the applicant's request in order to allow meetings with neighbors. They have met with most, but not all of the neighbors. And they are also in the process of undertaking a drainage study of the property, which is rather important to this particular development. Given that it has been deferred several times, all parties agreed to simply defer it or postpone it indefinitely, which means when the applicant is ready to come back to council, we will give new notice to the neighbors and to council as well, of course. So we, Mr. Board Lucy is the solicitor for the applicant. He is not here tonight, but he has confirmed in writing that his client is agreeable to this approach.
Okay, is there anybody here either to speak in favor of or against this application? Seeing none, staff, council, do you have any questions of staff? All in favor? Carried.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we can now move into the consent portion of the agenda.
Counsel, we're in consent. Who's going to start? We can vote on the consent agenda if no one has anything to say. I'm completely comfortable with that. Counsel Shoemaker.
Thank you. On matter 6.3, tender for ready-mix concrete. This was up at the last meeting, Counsel Bruni asked a question, we didn't get a reply because Mr. Gowns wasn't here. But I believe perhaps Mr. Drury has the answer this time. It appears from the attachment to the report that a price which was not included by the winning bid, Lafarge, is what sort of clinched them, the, the contracts, and it was included from other tenders, which is what put them over the price from the winning bid. So what, why is it that, that a price that wasn't included was, was ultimately what allowed the winning bid to get the contract?
Through Mr. Mayor to Counsel Shoemaker, the last time this report was here, if you're looking at the actual summary of tenders, under Lafarge, it had, where it says NC, no charge, right now it had zeros in there. It caused a little bit of confusion. Quite frankly, what it is, is every time you go on an underload, under three and but over two, which we do a lot, you get an extra service charge. So over and above what your actual costs are, you have a service charge. Well, in this case here, Lafarge, it said they're setting aside service charges. They're not going to charge us for that. So that's considerable savings for us. That's really the reasoning for it.
Okay, so it, it's really a, a zero?
It is a zero.
Okay.
But I had them put the no charge in there, just to make it a little clearer to read when you're reading through the tenders. There is no charge for that actual service. As you'll see in the other ones, there's a unit price of 100, and the other Fisher Wavy was 115. Well, that's an extra service charge over your actual cost. So they're saying we're not going to do that.
Okay, well, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in 6.3? Counsel Shoemaker, anything else?
Yes, the finger dock replacement, 6.5.
Okay.
I did have the question of what are finger docks?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker, they're just really your slips. So they're the actual extensions that come out of the main dock where the boats tie up to.
Okay. And this would, and, and am I correct in assuming this would be finger dock replacements at both Bellevue and Bondar Marina?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker, the one replacement is for the field dock at Bondar Marina. And then there's two docks that are being replaced this year at Bellevue Marina. And we're looking at a five-year plan to replace all the docks at Bellevue. So this is kind of stage one.
Okay. And does this RFP include the capital construction, or is it just the engineering for that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker, this is just initially the engineering. They're going to do the spec work, and then from there, we'll look at going out to tender. There was funds set aside in the 2017 capital budget to, for this expense.
And finally, last question on this one. In the Bondar Marina, there is a section of boardwalk that has been removed for a number of years that makes our boardwalk, it's missing a link in essence. Does it include engineering work for the replacement of that, the ultimate replacement of that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker, no, this is just strictly for the field dock and for those two sections. and for those two sections of dock at Bellevue Marina. Bondar Marina, we're going to need to take a closer look at it as an entire marina because we do need to look at, we have one slip, set of docks, it's actually 20-foot slips. The 20-foot slips are rarely used just because of the size of the boats that are traveling through the Great Lakes usually exceed 30 feet. So, we need to look at how we can reconfigure that space to get more 30-foot slips there. So, we need to take a much closer look at that marina.
Okay. And obviously a view to removing the Monogoma from there would be helpful.
Yes.
Those are all my questions on that report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anybody else on 6.5? That's it for the consent agenda, Counsel Shoemaker? Go ahead.
I have a question, I believe it's directed to Ms. Shell. Why are we establishing a new reserve rather than just upping the limit, the allowable limit in the existing reserve?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker, this was a request that the Police Services has put through. As with the capital reserve that is currently in existence, it would also be managed by the board, and both these reserves have different purposes. The original reserve is a capital reserve and the second one is operational. And we shouldn't be mixing the two together because it makes it more difficult for the board to manage the funds as well as for us to oversee the use.
But the, am I correct in that the report says the operational reserve is only going to be funded from any surplus to the capital reserve?
You are correct in that. It's because we didn't want to add anything to the levy and the capital reserve has reached its maximum funding limit. So, there is funding available through the regular operational levy for that capital reserve that we can utilize to help fund the second one.
Now, when a reserve's reached its funding limit, who sets the limit? Is it us?
Yes, council has set the limit through the reserve and reserve fund policy, which was established last year around this time, and all reserves and reserve funds had upper limits as well as funding sources, and council approved that.
So, I know police have, for a number of years, said that their building is aging. I just wonder if, if it's a sensible limit, the one that we've got on there, given their, you know, anticipated capital needs?
The police capital reserve is not for building maintenance. That is through our asset management reserve where all city infrastructure is prioritized and the requirements for each building is set out and it's funded through a separate reserve. The police capital reserve is more for guns, equipment, that type of thing.
Gotcha. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Anybody else on 6.7? Seeing none? Counsel Shoemaker, anything else?
Yes. Reconstruction of McNabb Street to Pim Street Drainage Improvements. A question through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Elliott. Mr. Elliott, I was somewhat confused reading this report because it seems like there was a big change to the scope of work, but only after all the bids were submitted and it was sort of negotiated on a, on a, on a one-off basis with the lowest bid that came in for the increased scope of work. So, I was just wondering, when do we decide, you know, when a scope of work changes so significantly, when do we decide, is it time to go out to a new RFP or just to continue with the existing RFP?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Shoemaker, the wording that we chose for this report is perhaps a little inaccurate. It's not really a change in scope of work. It's more of a pulling back on the limits of the work. There's no difference in complexity. It's a unit price contract, so because the bid came in high, higher than we expected, we're bringing back the limits of the work. We're doing less work essentially for, essentially for the budget that, or for the bid that the contractor has given us to fit our budget. The, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry.
So, I, yeah, I think, because I asked the same question, Counsel Shoemaker, and the answer I got when I asked it was, they haven't, they decreased the scope, but because they got unit price, it had, it would have been the same, as I understand, decrease across all of the responding documents. Your issue would be a fairness issue, right?
Right, yes. So, just when, I guess, when do we, perhaps to the city solicitor, when are we obligated to, you know, when, when is it that we've changed the scope so much?
I think, I think Mr. Elliott's found his, his train of thought here. Did you find that, Mr. Elliott?
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Shoemaker. The, the negotiation, the changes that we do with some contractors, it's a fairly common thing in, in our, in our business. In fact, we did it last year with Second Avenue with another contractor. The bid came in too high. We pulled the limits of the back, of the, of the project from Second Line back to Canotte Avenue and proceeded to award the project. It's common, we do it on, we've done it on several occasions. I know there's other owners such as the MTO that does the same thing in this. Again, it's not a change, a real change in scope, but a change in limits. We're just doing a little less work for the budget.
Well, I think to get to Counsel Shoemaker's question, is there a threshold at which point you've changed the project to such a degree that you feel like you'd have to re-tender it?
Mr. Mayor, if there was a change in, a total change in scope, what we're actually doing, if we're adding something of different complexity or something came up that was, that really radically changed the type of work, then we would, we would probably suggest to council that we not award and we re-tender the project.
Are you satisfied with that information, Counsel Shoemaker? Is that clear to you?
So, I guess you're, the conclusion I could draw is you, that hasn't happened here.
That's, that's correct. The, the work, that, the scope of work that we're doing is, hasn't, isn't really changed. It's still buried pipe, but we're crossing the road. We're doing a shorter length of pipe essentially to fit closer into the budget and presumably we want to carry on replacing this sewer. There will be a second phase at some point in the future. Fortunately, the work that can be done for this budget will go a fair ways to actually rectifying the problem. It won't completely eliminate it, but it will, it will do most of what we want.
Okay. Counsel Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a Ward II issue. It's been a long, longstanding issue of severe flooding in this area because the area right behind Canadian Motel is almost like a bowl. And Mr. Elliott, I think it was actually Carl's report, right? It mentioned that Elgoma Family Services, I also believe Group Health Center YMCA have experienced stormwater flood damage over the years and each of these organizations, I think with the exception of AFS, have been able to spend a great deal of money to try and address the problem within their ability to do so. You just said at the very end there in your comments a moment ago that, that the scope of the project that we are going to proceed with will go towards reducing. It won't necessarily eliminate, is that what I understood, but it will go towards reducing this problem? You know that I know how longstanding this is.
Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Myers, the, what we're doing here is increasing the size of the pipe to accommodate today's design standard. The pipe that's there doesn't accommodate what we designed to today, and we're also putting some storage downstream between Gladstone and Pim in order not to make any, introduce any problems downstream of this whole, whole location. Essentially, we won't be, we're reducing, probably reducing the frequency of flooding more than anything else. That's all you can do when you're designing something to a 10-year return period, presumably all things being equal. You can expect the sewer to surcharge every 10 years. Right now, it might surcharge every, every 18 months or so. So, we're reducing the frequency of the problem.
Okay. Because you mentioned, or it's mentioned in the report that the failed corrugated steel pipe that drains from Monterey Gardens subdivision through Poplar and through the Canadian, that's, that's what you're replacing, right? That's in the scope of work, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Myers, yeah, the reduced limits of the project do include that failed storm sewer. Unfortunately, this, this drainage reach has several sections that have the old corrugated steel pipe which is rusted and needs to be replaced with concrete or plastic.
And then it goes on to say that the storm sewer replacement within Poplar Park to, on the northerly part, to the north side of McNabb will remain, and that's the piece where replacement will happen when capital funds permit? Is that, I guess, I mean, I know how much of a concern this is when we have the big issue with flooding. You are quite comfortable that that's going to do as much as it can at this time? And I guess my next question would be, how much of a priority then is it to continue with the replacement of that sewer replacement within Poplar Park?
Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Myers, we considered a priority to replace the undersized pipe and the portions of our failing. However, it's incumbent on, on property owners, and I know the health unit, pardon, yeah, the Group Health Center and the YMCA have, have done considerable work protecting themselves from the storm sewer as is appropriate under our bylaw. And that's incumbent on all property owners to, to have the right facilities to keep, keep the basements from flooding.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just great to see this happening. Thank you, Don.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on 7.6.15, sorry? Seeing none, is that the end of it, Counsel Shoemaker?
For me, yes.
Counsel Butland?
6.13 and 6.14, different, but the same question. Both of them, I believe, Mr. Elliott, under, under budget. Is that something that's trending and is there a reason? Do you have any idea as to why this is happening?
Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Butland, it's just market forces. We're certainly pleased to get some lower prices, but if you put all three projects together, the one, the Pim Street project is a little bit over. So, what we try to do with the finance department is ensure that although some projects are over and some projects are under, we bring the global budget together. So, the, the bit of overspend that's, that's forecasted for the Pim Street job will be covered off by the underspend, the anticipated underspend on Franklin and Gray Streets.
I guess I shouldn't have ignored the Pim Street. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
So, Counsel Bruni on 6.13, 6.14?
Yeah, regarding Franklin Street, since it's in Ward 5, for Counsel Fadden and myself, when would the start date be and expected end date? Would we know?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruni, the start, typically when you award, if you award the contract now, the contractor's going to need two or three weeks, maybe four weeks to order materials and have concrete manholes and that kind of thing on site. That, that takes some lead time. So, the project may start within the next few weeks, we hope. But it's a typical project. It's going to go, it's going to go through to, to October.
To October, okay.
Anybody else on 6.13, 6.14? Seeing none, Counsel Butland, anything else? Counsel Myers?
6.19. It's the welcome sign agreement. The only question I had here is we're, we're, we are already a year and a half into the four-year agreement, so obviously the time's going to go by quickly. Can we not negotiate for a longer period? I guess I don't think that in the foreseeable future, we're going to remove our welcome sign. It's on the east end of the city. It's with the rail, rail company. So, I guess it's through you, Mr. Mayor, to our solicitor. Is there any way we can, I mean, as I said, it's a four-year agreement, we're a year and a half already down the pipe, so.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Myers, yes, I'm sure we could go back and negotiate for a longer period of time. That's not what's before you tonight, I need a direction to that effect, but you could go back certainly.
It, it just seems to me that it's...
This is the attractive welcome sign. This isn't the one that says like Memorial Cup champions.
No. This is the, I mean, it's a permanent welcome signage. Like, I would hope we could look at 10-year increments, I mean, instead of a four-year, and meanwhile, we're really at two and a half from tonight. So, is that a handicap if we don't approve this tonight or at this point, we're a year and a half down, does it make much difference? Should we go back and look at a longer?
And through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Myers, I, I'm pleased to take that back if that's the direction of council. This is what the rail was, was comfortable with. This was the timeframe we looked at because historically those are the increments, but I can certainly, if that's the direction, I can certainly...
But I think they're probably the increments to may stay in the term of, would this bring us to the end of this council term?
It would be taking us past it, wouldn't it?
Hardly.
We're two and a half years, it's two and a half years yet, we're only a year and a half away from an election.
To 19.
Yeah, but it takes you into 19.
No, a year and a half past this term of council. You know, we're a year and a half away and this is two and a half years. So, my point is simply, it's not a huge amount of money, but let's lock it in if we can. I guess that's every little penny counts. So, I mean, I just think it's kind of goofy that it's a four-year agreement, but here meanwhile, we're already a year and a half past, so the number seems quite arbitrary, so.
So, do you want to move, remove this from consent? Is that what you're asking, Counsel Myers?
Well, I, I don't know what the procedure, I suppose, that the clerk would advise on that, but I'm just saying, shouldn't we look at a longer term? That's all, simply a point. I'll leave it with staff and, you know, I mean, I'm not going to vote against this or anything, but I'm just saying it seems a little odd to...
Well, it's on the consent agenda and if it does pass, we're agreeing to this term. So, if, if you're looking for something different, we have to take it off consent.
Then let's just duly note that in a two and a half years' time, we look at a 10-year agreement instead of doing this in baby steps. Because again, it's a, the people, I, I think everyone's aware of the sign we're talking about, it's the great big stone pillars and wood. It's a permanent sign structure. It's not something that's going to likely go away in the next two and a half or five or 10 hopefully years.
Okay.
Okay, the other one I had, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if anyone else is on that, I doubt it, but...
Go ahead.
Is 6.21, the Millennium Fountain.
Okay.
Counselor Hollingsworth and I had brought this forward. So, thank you for the report, and I'm just going to read my comments here that while many of us, especially myself, will miss the fountain and the water, upon reading the staff report, Mr. Blanchard, I learned something critical to my own pursuit of seeking to keep this fountain. I, I don't think this has been well communicated in the public and it was quite enlightening for me, is that he clearly stated that this sort of fountain, in short, is not designed to withstand the waterways of the St. Mary's River. I think we all know the St. Mary's River and its current and so on and so forth, and ironically, I was away this past weekend golfing on a course where they had the identical fountain on the, the course. And I, and I thought about your report, right, where you mentioned that this is the type of fountain that you would find on a golf course. It's not something you would find in a river like the St. Mary's River. So, I would suggest that we've been quite fortunate that the fountain has withstood 15 years of service, provided us that many years of service, and removal of the funding in the budget for continuation of the annual operation, and now the needed repairs has forced us to look at other options. I do very much, however, look forward to the Part II report that I think is going to be coming forward around, we had asked for the creation of a land fountain. So, as council knows, we have the Splash Pad project identified as a next recreation feature to develop, and we might hope that a land-based fountain in the vicinity of Clurgan John Rosewood Park might be our next project after Splash Pad. So, I do really appreciate the report and found it very informative, and it's just kind of too bad that we didn't know that back in the year 2000. But I don't think anyone here, with the exception of one or two, was on council at the time. So, here we are now, thankful that it lasted 15 years, but I think that the fountain in the river is toast. So, thanks for the report.
Anybody else on that item, 6.21? Seeing none, Counsel Myers, do you have any more items?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 6.16, East End Sewage Treatment, through you to Mr. Elliott, I guess. But just, just trying to understand, treatment plant primary clarifiers in bioreactor engineering services. In layman's terms, why do we require the engineering services? What's being done and when is it going to be done in the East End sewage plant?
Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Christian, there's a settlement issue with these, these are big concrete tanks in the ground, and there's a settlement issue with, with them, and we need to determine what's causing the settlement, what damage has been done, if any, and we need to arrest that settlement and, and figure out what needs to be done to prevent it from continuing.
Is this perhaps premature in that we're hiring, we're at least looking at hiring an engineering company to look at this? Does this relate at all to the actual original design? Do we know the, the issues that we've had from the beginning with this treatment plant?
Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Christian, it's very difficult for me to say what the, what the problem is here, but I suspect it's a soil, a geotechnical issue. It's something to do with the groundwater and the types of soil in that area. And yes, we did have very good advice at the beginning and there was some head scratching going on and we need to identify what the trouble is.
So, this, so this, to employ these services, to have them come in, we're just trying to determine what the problem is. We're not actually moving forward with any specific plan. So, my question about what effect this will have on the service of the plant and how long it may be down and all of that stuff is way too premature at this point.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Christian, yes, that's correct. We're going to do the engineering study and find out what the trouble is and what needs to be done to correct it, and we will be back to council, no doubt, with a capital request for repair.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you, Counselor Christian. Anybody else on 6.16? Anything else, Counselor Christian?
Nope, that's it.
Any other counselors with matters of the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
A motion by Counselors Fatt and Hollingsworth, resolve that all the items listed under date 2017-05-29, Agenda Item 6, consent agenda be approved as recommended.
All in favor? Carry.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we can now move on with the remainder of the regular agenda.
And we've done a few items on that already, Mr. Clerk, so-
We have done a few. We have Item 7.1.1, Fire Chief Recruitment Process. Reported the CAO is on for council's consideration, and a motion by Counselors Fatt and Hollingsworth. Before I read this motion, it does have a spot for a council member to be appointed to the selection committee. We would entertain interest, and if there's more than one counselor interested, we would vote on that prior to reading this resolution.
You nominate?
Yeah, we can nominate.
You nominate, Counselor Christian?
Do we have any other interested counselors? No? You accept that, Counselor Christian? Okay. Anybody else? There you go.
I'll move ahead with the reading of the motion. Resolve that the reported the chief administrative officer concerning fire chief recruitment process be received, and that council authorize the filling of the vacancy by the selection process in accordance with the city's policy and guidelines for the recruitment of senior staff, and appoint Counselor Paul Christian to the selection committee.
All in favor? Carry.
At this point, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I see the members of the PUC are here, and we can proceed if they're ready to have the shareholder meeting of the PUC. We have that under Section 7.8.1, and we have a motion to proceed into that part of the meeting. A motion by Counselors Bruny and Myers, resolve that city councils now authorized to meet an open session as the sole shareholder of PUC Inc. and PUC Services Inc. And further be it resolved that city council points Mayor Christian Provenzano as council's proxy to vote on the resolutions of the shareholder of PUC Inc. and PUC Services Inc. I would make one note to council, there is an additional motion that we will deal with. We will go through the regular part of the presentation and resolutions of the shareholder, and then we will move to how we will deal with that motion.
Mr. Bonifero, before I turn the floor to you and you get going on the report, I think it would be remiss if we didn't recognize Mr. Perella. I'm sure you're going to in your report, but on behalf of Council Dominic, we wish you very well in your retirement, and we thank you for your 30-plus years of service to the PUC. Mr. Bonifero, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I have the pleasure of bringing you the annual report of the PUC Services, PUC Inc. on behalf of the board. With me, as you pointed out, our soon-to-be-retired president and CEO, Mr. Perella. Our vice presidents, Terry Greco, Kevin Bell, and Claudio Stefano. And helping me put this package together was the whole team, but through the slide presentation, as Jordan's in, our supervisor of communication and customer care. So 2016's been a good year for the PUC, I'm happy to announce. I'm gonna bring you some highlights throughout the process, and to remind you that even though this is May, we're talking about what was accomplished in the calendar year of 2016. So a reminder to our corporate structure, for those that aren't aware, I'm sure this audience is, you are the sole shareholder of PUC Inc. And PUC Inc. owns PUC Services, or sorry, PUC Distribution. And then PUC Services contracts to the Public Utilities Commission and to PUC Distribution to provide the services of the electrical and the water services in Sioux St. Marie. Since our inception back in 2000, we've paid in 2016, $2.5 million again. Total payments from 2001 to 2015 were 37, so that brings us just under $40 million that has been returned to the city as an investment in this organization. A brief income statement, in the annual report, shareholders' report, is the detailed financials, and if you have any questions on the detailed financials, that's why the CFO is here and not me. So general revenues in 2015 were $90 million, up to almost $100 million in 2016. You'll see that based predominantly in the cost of energy. Our gross margin stayed around that $16 million, 15 and a half in 2016. So you see the breakdown before pills, the net income of $1 million in 2015, and a loss of $220,000 in 2016. The bottom numbers stayed consistent with the interest in long-term debt and a cash dividend of $610,000. A reminder that besides you, as the city is our largest customer, we maintain 18 other service contracts. In the hydroelectric side of it, it's with Espinola Hydro. With water treatment, it's various degrees of contracts of various sizes, but of note, those contracts, outside contracts, generate about $1.7 million in additional revenue to the organization. This is one of the things that I think the city should be proud of as a shareholder, and we certainly are proud of as an organization, that in the utility side, the electrical bill side of the equation, we are the third lowest in the province. Hydro Hoxbury is the lowest, but you'll see some comparisons to some of our northern neighbors, Thunder Bay, Greater Sudbury, and Elgoma Power. Note that Elgoma Power is the highest, 71 of 71 utilities in the province, but we have held our own at that three. That's based on a 750 kilowatt-hour customer per month, so people at home might say, well, that's not my bill, $137. It is, and it obviously depends on your consumption, but that's what the OEB uses as a base point of comparing province to province. The average electrical bill, you've seen this slide before, I printed it up a little bit with the Looney this time. Of the dollar, every dollar that we collect from our ratepayers, our customers, we retain 18 cents of that dollar, 18 percent. That goes to pay our administration, promotion, all of those other type of items. The biggest chunk is that 63 cents that goes to your electrical bill. The big project in 2016, approved by you and executed by our management team, was the LED light conversion project. Very pleased to say that it came in under budget. All 9,050 lights in Sioux St. Marie are now LED. The project's annual estimated savings of energy was budgeted to be approximately $1 million, and in fact, it came in at $997,000. So right in that area. Of note, we save enough energy in our streetlights now to power 415 single-family houses. So one step in a larger step of conversion, and congratulations to you for approving it, and congratulations to staff for executing such a large project. One of the other projects that is always ongoing in our infrastructure and asset management plan is the voltage conversion plan. This is where we change poles and wires and transformers and those type of things in order to provide more reliability and efficient use of the asset. That's ongoing. We converted 2.75 kilometers of line and replaced 89 utility poles in the year. Voltage conversion for 2016, the project was about $1.1 million. Conservation and demand management is a mandate from the government operated through IESO, so the $355,000 that you see isn't technically PUC money, but we administer the program and distribute that money. Just one of the many success stories in Sioux St. Marie was Helene. They participated in a light retrofit program, and to their benefit, they received a $6,600 check to assist them in that retrofit. One of the ways of managing some of the high costs of energy, and I don't say that lightly, I think everybody knows the pressures and stresses that the cost of electricity has caused not only our customers, but customers across the province, is the HERE project, Home Energy Assessment Program, where we would go in and do a, on behalf of the government, again, funded through the government, a process, an assessment program. We went in hoping to attract about 175, 177 people that were interested, households that were interested. We received over 300 registered to go. So it's definitely a demand item, something that we see growing and that we will build on in the future. The biggest thing in electrical cost is Ontario Fair Hydro Plan. It's not administered by the PUC, be very clear. It's a provincial government initiative. We see that their mandate and what they've proposed is that they will reduce electricity bills by 25 percent in 2016. The, our customers have already seen that 8 percent reduction by, through the HST portion in January. The further remaining 17 percent reduction will be coming through various different programs. The biggest is the refinancing of the global adjustment over a longer period of time. There'll also be the high-energy users, the baseboard heaters, the ones that we talked about that have registered for the HERE program. They'll have the opportunity to register through some support programs. There's looking to enhance the competitiveness of small manufacturers and the industrials of industries by lowering the eligibility threshold for the conservation initiative, and improving sector efficiencies and modernizing the electrical market, working in collaboration with the IESO operator and the Ontario Energy Board. Some of our high lights, and this is me sharing on behalf of the board, but these are really operational highlights and successes that management should be very proud of. 774 days accident-free with no lost time accident. They successfully completed the annual provincial electrical safety audit. There is no operation, there be no operating, PUC was found to be operating in full regulatory compliance with no non-compliances or any needs for improvement items identified by the auditors. These are always, as I'm before you, every year, I tell you this, this is what should be most important to you, is that all water and wastewater facilities were operated in full regulatory compliances. And we delivered, again, the caution and chance electrical awareness program to 24 area elementary schools, which was able to communicate with almost 2,000 students. For 2017, looking forward, some already underway, our project spotlight would be the start of the Substation 16 rebuild. These are infrastructure, critical infrastructure to our organization. Some have given us well past their expected life expectancy, and so this is delivering power for, this particular substation's been delivering power for over 52 years. So this is a project that'll span over two years as we rebuild Substation 16. Some effects that 2016 on the bills, on the rate impacts, just a reminder of what actually happened in 2016. In 2016, when we were before you, we chose to decline a 1.65 increase of the electricity delivery charges. A previously approved 10 percent increase in water was waived, so the water rates for 2016 were the same as they were for 2015. And you, as council, chose to reduce the city sewer surcharge by 38 percent. And I believe this quote comes out of the Sioux Star, that said Sioux St. Marie PUC customers have one of the lowest water rates among municipalities in the province. An independent firm report, Sioux St. Marie ranked as the sixth lowest municipality for its water and sewer rates in 2016. The comparison, similar to the electricity comparison, we are the sixth lowest in the province for water. Brampton is number one, part of that's critical mass. But I've also listed our northern neighbors, North Bay, Greater Sudbury, Thunder Bay, showing them significantly, I would say, above us. The average consumption, this is based on 200 cubic meters of water, which is about our average customer, and so that average bill is $685, and you see the highest bill in the province is as high as $1,700, so a significant difference. Our water, drinking water system report, our inspection report, we actually test numerous particles in the water, and I think it's important to note again, as the owner and the one responsible for it, that we are well, well within compliance. Final inspection rating of 100 percent of all chemicals and all substances in the water. Another initiative that came about mid-year in 2016 was the water main relining project. That took effect on Irwin and Tucket Street area. We used it as a pilot project to evaluate the effectiveness of relining some of our older infrastructure to address particularly discolored water, but water quality in general. We would rank the project as a success. It works. It's a proven technology, and we'll be looking forward to utilizing that technology more in the future as we maintain our infrastructure. On top of the water, that water lane, main relining project, we continually, as I said in the discussion on the electricity side, maintain the asset that's very valuable to this community. So in 2016, those are all the streets that were touched by renewal projects, but just in numbers, we replaced 18 hydrants, either replaced or relined over 2,700 meters of water mains, and there was 181 services replaced in 2016. So on the water side, the outlook for 2017 is the skate upgrade. Skate is the operating system that manages our infrastructure, controls the entire treatment and supply infrastructure for the city. There'll be $4.7 million invested in other infrastructure in the water side of the operation. And as I mentioned earlier, the water main relining project that we did in 2016, we'll take a chance to step back and evaluate it and look at implementing that in 2018 again as part of our asset management. From a board governance standpoint, that we worked on a strategic plan and have now developed a strategic plan, the first one for the organization, which is interesting enough since 2000. We filled board vacancies, four board vacancies in 2016, and upgraded, and you're gonna have it, they're all in your package for this annual meeting, upgraded the bylaws, the terms of reference for the board, and a lot of governance work was done. My hat's off to the rest of our board that have been very active in bringing that forward. And in 2017, the board looks to fill vacancies again, and at this point, will roll out our strategic plan. And as the mayor said, the final note for our annual report, it doesn't fall in 2016, but I think I'd be remiss without mentioning that we are, accepted Dominic's decision to retire in September of this year, or sooner. He's agreed to stay on while we commence a search for the replacement of the president and CEO. Dominic has been with the PUC since 1987, starting there as the single engineer in the firm. I think safe be it to say, he's lived through the years of commissioners being elected, my father being one of them through those years, through the transition from a commission to a private for-profit corporation, has led the organization through all of those changes to where we are today. And I think where we are today is an exciting time for the utility and for this organization. But I, on behalf of the board, would like to also thank Dominic publicly for his years of service, so thank you, Dominic. (applause) That was the mayor's, our annual report. There, I'll leave it to you to conduct the annual general meeting with the various motions and-
So before we get to the motions, we should allow any counselors that have questions of the board. Counselor Christian and I are pretty familiar with all this, so we've been through it a number of times. We'll cede the floor to the rest of you. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. Excellent presentation, and also I just wish to, wish all the best to Dominic in his retirement. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned about different contracts that we have. I think that is important for us to reemphasize. And I guess the two questions I have, on average, these contracts we have, are there any new contracts coming up? Often are these negotiated, and have we lost any contracts over the short period of time?
There's always more contracts. There's, every small municipality and township has services that are provided either by themselves or by an outside agency. So as an organization, it's part of our strategic plan to grow the business and to look for those opportunities. As far as lost contracts, have we lost, we lost Echo Bay in the last cycle. As of water treatment, was Echo Bay, right? We renewed three and lost, but Echo Bay did not get renewed.
Okay. And when you renew them, are they usually, average, what's the length of a contract usually?
Five years.
Up to five years.
Okay, great. And for the viewers at home, you mentioned, again, what drives up electricity costs, global adjustment fee you mentioned, tau, which is time of use pricing, and then also delivery charges. So can you- So can you just remind us again, two thousand and sixteen, PUC, how did you help the residents of Sioux St. Marie and so forth?
So of all of the other ones you said, we had no control over, so we just implement that and collect on behalf of the province. But the delivery charge is what we actually go to the OEB to get rate approval for. So in two thousand and sixteen, you work on a five-year cycle on your cost-to-service rate application. So in two thousand and sixteen, the OEB had already approved a one-point-six-five percent increase in distribution rates for PUC to implement. PUC chose not to implement that one-point-six-five percent increase in two thousand and sixteen.
Okay. So again, thank you for looking out for people of Sioux St. Marie. So in one last question, you have basically three periods in a day, your off-peak, mid-peak, and on-peak pricing. And it's my understanding, just reading a few articles, that off-peak is now on the increase.
So just for clarity back, it's not the PUC that has off-peak and time of use, that's the provincial mandated, and that will change at the provincial decision, not that's not an item or decision-making process that management or the board has control over. So it will change. Those will change. There's some talk that they may get rid of the time-of-use pricing structure, but that, at this point in time, it is time-of-use, and it does change based on consumption. So based on when people use the most power, that becomes the most demand and the highest price, and that will change in the ebb and tide of how consumption happens.
Okay. Interesting, that might change at the provincial level, because they're saying the off-peak, sixty-five percent, this is the average, sixty-five percent people now are switching, doing their washing, laundry, so forth, off-peak. And now they're seeing an increase as well in the bills. Thank you.
Councillor Myers?
I'm in, Mr. Mayor, so I don't know if...
Go ahead.
Am I the only other one? Certainly, I can't, not this time, go by without publicly thanking Dominic for the number of years that I've been on council, certainly on behalf of Ward Two. Many, many, many times over the years, I've had to be in touch with him on a variety of issues, and he's always been absolutely fantastic, immediate in his response to me, and sometimes it's been quite late at night. And Dominic, I just want to thank you and wish you and your family the very, very best and many happy years. Thank you for your service.
Councillor Shoemaker?
I just wanted to thank Dominic, but I also wanted to thank Jim for an excellent annual report. I thought that was extremely informative and really helped us grasp the annual state of the corporation.
Yeah, so Councillor Shoemaker kind of started, but the only comment I had, which is that I think you can all tell that there's been a tremendous amount of governance work and administrative work, management work at the PUC over the last couple of years, and I think it's been very positive and very productive. So I'd like to acknowledge the senior management team at the PUC who's here. I know that the board, as led by Jim, has been challenging, and you know, there have been a lot of expectations. And that's because this is probably the most important asset the city of Sioux St. Marie owns. And so I want to thank you for meeting those expectations and working as hard as you have. And I want to thank Jim for leading the charge at the board level. It's been a really... Been a lot of change in the last two years at the board level, and it's a very dynamic board, and I think council could, and the community can feel very confident that we're going in a really positive direction and we're doing some really productive things there. So something I'm really proud to be part of, and thank you, Jim, for the effort, your efforts in leading it. Councillor Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't prepared to say anything at first, but I do think it's important for me on a personal level to thank Mr. Perella for his service with the PUC. I know my relationship with him in the last several years has been varied. When we, you know, when we started with the issue in the East End with the water issue, I wouldn't characterize it as adversarial, but we certainly had our discussions, and I always appreciated his approach. He was always a gentleman, and he's always a class act, and I don't think we should forget that. And he's managed a good company, and it's heading in new directions, and I too want to wish him all the best. I hope him and his family enjoy retirement, and I wish him and his family all the best.
Councillor Butland?
Yes. We went through some tough years, and to senior management, Dominic, for his leadership, I guess we didn't always agree, but you folks were on the firing line, and we were fielding hundreds and hundreds of calls, and I think you're aware of that. So thanks for that. Now, I do have a question. We conducted a, or you conducted a, water quality study, and we have not yet seen the results. I know they're there, and I'm very certain in talking to Jordan that they're very positive. Should we see those?
You will see them. We can present those as an individual item. I could capture the summary of them, and you've started the process by saying they are positive, we're seeing improvement, yet we still know that in pockets of the city, there's still issues from time to time of color, taste, and odor. And that's where our focus has been able to now bring that through the numerous projects. It's not one solution to that project, problem. We've done, and for you and Ward One, I know you cringe, our unidirectional flushing, but I could tell you staff has reported great success now in what they see in the field. This isn't anecdotal, this is what they see coming out of the hydrants when they do unidirectional flushing. We've looked at our composition of chemicals and our treatment processes, and we see that it's going to take some time as that those chemicals work their way through the system, stabilize and acclimatize themselves to the... So we are seeing improvement, but we recognize that it's not fully a hundred percent. But we have definitely recognized that we've isolated the problems in a lot of cases to being less frequent and in specific areas. So although we won't be embracing the phase-two, if you wish, plan at this point, we will be monitoring as we go forward the successes of all of those mixture of items that are bringing it. But by all means, we do have the survey results that we could share with you.
Maybe perhaps, Councillor Butland, if you like, we can look at a future agenda council in the near term, and we could have the Jordan come and do the presentation that he did at the board, or whomever the PUC says fit.
Right.
Thanks for the answer, Mr. Bonifaro. Related, unrelated to the report, our energy storage facility, I know you or we are landlords, but we're not operating it. I thought it was supposed to open a couple of months ago. What is the status?
Do you have an answer on Convergent?
July, July.
Oh, July. Mid-July, that's the Convergent project, right? Convergent Energy Project.
Thank you very much. Good.
Okay, so Mr. Clark, you want to take care of the rest of the shareholders?
If I can, Mr. Mayor, one item before we move to that. You're going to elect new directors, and I would like to recognize that we lost Judge Greco as a director sadly in this community, and he's been recognized for his contributions in the community in numerous ways, but he's been a member of the PUC family for a number of years. And I could tell you that he was active and attended meetings right up till the end. I had some health issues just prior to him passing away, and he called me to make sure I was okay, and that's the type of guy he was. So our respect and our loss of Judge Greco at the boardroom table, but into this community in general, goes without saying. We also, I'd like to recognize that Rob Reed sat on the board for almost two years, and Rob had resigned back in December, so that position's vacant. But Rob also added a lot of expertise and knowledge in the utility business to the boardroom table, and I would like to recognize both of those gentlemen for their contributions as you look to fill those vacancies. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you'll be voting on behalf of council for the main resolutions of the shareholder. First one is the resolution of the shareholder of PUC Inc., ratification of bylaw number one, be it resolved by law number one enacted by the board of directors of the corporation on March twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen, is hereby ratified. Ratification of bylaw number two, be it resolved that bylaw number two enacted by the board of directors of the corporation on March twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen, is hereby ratified. And ratification of the board of directors' terms of reference, be it resolved that the board of directors' terms of reference stated March twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen, and approved by the board of directors of the corporation are hereby ratified. Would you indicate your vote?
In favor.
Would you also indicate your vote for an identically worded resolution of the shareholder of PUC Services Inc.?
In favor.
In addition, we have the following resolutions of the shareholder of PUC Inc., financial statements, be it resolved that the financial statements of PUC Inc. for the fiscal year ended on December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, together with the report of the auditors thereon as placed before the undersigned are hereby approved. Appointment of auditors, be it resolved that the firm of KPMG LLP, chartered accountants, is hereby appointed auditor of the corporation until the close of the next annual meeting of the shareholder, or until their successors are duly appointed at a remuneration to be fixed by the directors. The directors being hereby authorized to fix such remuneration and election of directors, be it resolved that the following person, a resident Canadian, is hereby certified, or hereby elected, a director of the corporation to hold office until the close of the third annual meeting of the shareholder following his election, or until his successor has been duly elected or appointed, subject to the provisions of the corporation's bylaws and the Ontario Business Corporations Act, John Nacarado. Would you please indicate your vote, Mr. Mayor?
In favor.
And also, would you please indicate your vote for an identically worded resolution of the shareholder of PUC Services Inc.?
In favor.
Sir Mayor, members of council, that deals with the main resolutions of the shareholder. As I mentioned, we have an additional resolution. It's been put forth by Councillor Shoemaker and Councillor Nero. Just for procedural clarity, council, I would ask that you indicate by a show of hands your willingness to waive the notice provisions of the Business Corporations Act for this item. It came in just under the ten-day deadline required for the, by the Business Corporations Act. So if you could indicate your willingness to waive provisions by raising your hands. Thank you. Council, for the sake of expediency, we will deal with this procedurally very similar to a resolution of council, and that I will read it. You can have discussion on it and vote on it. By voting on it, you will indicate whether council as a whole supports it, and the mayor then can confirm that reading as on behalf of the shareholder. The motion is as follows. Whereas the PUC president and CEO has announced his intention to retire, and whereas the board of directors of PUC has announced that they will commence their search for a new president and CEO immediately, and whereas the PUC is wholly owned by the city of Sioux St. Marie, and whereas a new hire allows for new terms of employment to be part of any new hire, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Sioux St. Marie, as the shareholder, request that the board of PUC include within their posting and conditions of employment for a new president and CEO a public salary disclosure provision if said salary is one hundred thousand dollars annually or more.
Councillor Shoemaker, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm at it again. I've tried this a couple of different ways, not specific to PUC yet, but it's always been on my radar. This is a, for all intents and purposes, it's in essence a crown corporation, a corporation of our municipality where the, we as council are the shareholder, and we as council represent the people of Sioux St. Marie. And so the people of Sioux St. Marie really are, in a roundabout way here, the shareholder of PUC. And everyone's thanked Mr. Perella for his service, and obviously I think that this has, you know, no bearing on a discussion about his performance. He's been an excellent CEO. He's dedicated much time to the PUC over thirty years, as we heard. His retirement, however, does present this opportunity, where we can ensure that someone comes into a new contract knowing that there is going to be a salary disclosure. So there was discussion, I think, last time at council about, well, can we impose this or can we impose that? Well, if you make it an upfront condition of employment, I think it gets around any issue, because you're saying to them, if you apply to this job, you will disclose your salary. And so if they apply, they're obviously, you know, agreeing that they are okay with disclosing their salary. It's a good job in the community. It is, it is a public-sector job. I would really call it a public-sector job. Just because it is one link removed, as I've said before, just because it is one link removed from the municipality directly, I don't think that that should mean that we do not disclose the salary of someone making a hundred thousand dollars a year or more. So I am hopeful that procedurally this gets around some of the issues that folks around this table have had with supporting past resolutions of this nature, and I'm hopeful that, you know, when a new CEO is hired, we get salary disclosure from them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Myers?
My concern with that, Mr. Mayor, would be that what do we do with our other employees at the PUC who would also be exceeding a hundred thousand dollars? We can't just, it's either, I mean, you can do it with either all employees or not. I don't think you can pick one employee who earns in excess of a hundred thousand dollars.
This motion would not apply to the remainder of the employees.
Exactly. Thank you.
Any other comments? Just, Councillor Shoemaker, one of the reasons why I said to the clerk, we need to have this discussion, we need to have a vote, is because if it was left to me to vote the share of the shareholder, I wouldn't support the resolution. And frankly, I respect council to the degree that if the majority of you tell me to vote the share that way, I will vote the share that way. My concern comes from the fact that we're trying really hard to run this company like a private-sector for-profit company. And although it's owned by us and we are the public sector, I'd be confused, I'd be concerned about going into a recruitment process where maybe a sophisticated applicant would look at this and say, not only am I answering to a board of directors, I might also be answering to a city council. And I don't want to give somebody that impression at the outset. And I'm not as sophisticated on this matter because it was kind of ending near the beginning of my term, but we had a related employer issue, where I think a union at the PUC was arguing that we were a related employer, and I think this is exactly the kind of activity that a union would point to to make those arguments successful. And thankfully, they weren't successful that time around, but I'd be concerned about making that successful on a going-forward basis. But I note, and I want to recognize this, Councillor Shoemaker was smart and I think respectful, and this is a request, right? So it's a request of the PUC board. It doesn't bind the PUC board in any way. But in any event, I'm shy of making that request. Sitting on the PUC board, I've got a tremendous amount of faith in the people that are sitting there, that they'll manage that corporation properly, and I don't want to be sending them requests like this from the council chamber. And I think that we might potentially create legal issues that we don't want to have on a going-forward basis. So I understand the spirit of the request, but if it's left to me to vote the share and there isn't a vote on it, I certainly wouldn't support it, which is why I asked the clerk to have a vote, because I recognize that you might have a different opinion than I do, and if you wanted me to vote the single share this way, I would. Did you want a chance to rebut, Councillor Shoemaker, because you certainly permitted that in court of the rules?
Yes, sir, certainly. You know, I've, I disagree with you, and I disagree with Councillor Myers. I have tried this five different ways now, and it appears to me that this council simply does not want to disclose salaries over a hundred thousand. So, you know, I mean, the next request might be that our council ask the provincial government to just repeal the Public Salary Disclosure Act altogether, because we do not seem intent on living by those rules that they have, that they have set for us. We seem content to do the absolute bare minimum in terms of transparency, in terms of public salary disclosure. Certainly in other areas, we exceed the minimums for transparency, but I think in disclosing salaries over a hundred thousand dollars, we are sorely deficient to where we could be a leader in the area. So I, I'm disappointed. I ask that, however it works procedurally, we note how everyone's voted on this.
Yeah, so to be clear, we do live by the rules that are prescribed in the Act. What we're not doing is applying those rules to a body they don't apply to. So if we could, Councillor Shoemaker, can we have a recorded vote in this type of session, or just to show a hand? I think he's asking for a recorded vote.
In essence.
We're in a shareholders' meeting right now, we're not in the council meeting, so the same rules don't apply.
Mr. Mayor, unless the city solicitor wants to correct me, I would suggest I go ahead with hearing your votes individually and record them as if it was a recorded vote, and then I will discuss with the city solicitor how to best portray that in the minutes.
Okay. Very good.
Okay. Councillor Butland?
Against.
Councillor Myers?
Against.
Councillor Bruni?
Against.
Councillor Nero? Counselor Nero?
Four.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Four.
Counselor Hollinsworth?
Against.
Counselor Hoopinen?
Against.
Counselor Christian?
Against.
Counselor Fatah?
Four.
Counselor Turco?
Against.
Mayor Provenciano?
Against.
Mayor Provenciano, would you please indicate?
Against.
Thank you for the record for the shareholder vote. That concludes the shareholder portion of the meeting, council.
Mr. Mayor, just to finish that topic up, you should know that the, the board has drafted an RFP for the selection of a, an executive search firm that will go out tomorrow, so that process is underway, and we, we've heard the messages, and we, we have, we look to broad as cast, cast as broad a net as we can to, to find a leader of our organization.
Thank you, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if I could just a moment?
You absolutely can.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank, thank you, you and the members of council for your kind words tonight, and I do wish to express my gratitude for the years of association, and in fact, for some, it has been many years, and I have, in fact, enjoyed my years of working with you and for you over those years. So thank you again, and looking forward to retirement.
Mr. Perloff there. Mr. Perloff, one moment. Mr. Perloff, there are two words that come to mind based on my last two years at the PUC. When I think of you is that you are a gentleman and that you are committed, and I thank you for both of those qualities.
And I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Especially enjoyed working with you these past couple of years.
Yeah, I have. It's been, we've done a lot of good work, Dominic, and you certainly have a well-deserved retirement against, ahead of you, but hopefully you stick around and we can use your expertise at the PUC for different things.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this brings us to Section 8 of the agenda. Under 8.1, Construction Labor Cost Benefit Report, I have a motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Nero. Whereas since 1987, the city of Sault Ste. Marie has been limited by the Ontario Labor Relations Board to accepting bids for city infrastructure from only two unions; and whereas such restrictive practices limit fair competition; and whereas such restrictive practices unfairly prohibit Sault Ste. Marie businesses, both union and non-union, who are not associated with those two unions, from bidding and working on city infrastructure; and whereas on April 24th, 2017, a report before city council advised that there would be an upfront cost associated with any effort by the city of Sault Ste. Marie to achieve a non-construction employer designation under Ontario's Labor Relations Act, 1995, so that this unfair restriction might be lifted. Whereas a number of sizable infrastructure projects are projected in the city in the next several years, including but not limited to a major refurbishing of the West End Sewage Treatment Plant and a potential biosolids plant; and whereas it is in the city's best interest to have competitive bids from qualified contractors for the prospective work, and so that all qualified businesses, both union and non-union, are eligible to submit bids and work on such projects. Now therefore be it resolved that staff be requested to report to council with, one, the estimated, excuse me, the estimated cost of any upcoming city infrastructure projects that would require the city only accept bids from the two unions currently allowed to submit bids; two, the anticipated cost of making an application to the Ontario Labor Relations Board to be granted a non-construction employer designation; three, a report outlining actions the city would have to take to achieve a non-construction employer designation at the Labor Relations Board; four, the timeframe within which the city would be able to achieve a non-construction employer designation; five, if known or determinable, the time it would take to recover the costs associated with acquiring a non-construction employer designation from the savings that would be achieved by allowing bidding from all qualified contractors for city infrastructure projects; and six, any other relevant information.
Okay, Counsel Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counsel Nero, for seconding this motion. As most will recall, Mr. Mayor, on December 12th, 2016, Counsel Myers and I brought a motion asking staff to provide an update on the status of the city's designation as a construction employer in light of a decision, an Ontario Labor Relations Board decision that came out of Essex County that allowed the school board there to get out of their construction employer designation. We got that report back a few weeks ago from Commissioner Nero, and it said in essence that Essex County had changed their practices over a number of years and challenged their designation as a construction employer under the Ontario, at the Ontario Labor Relations Board. After a lengthy legal battle in Essex County with the union that had a monopoly over their construction work, Essex was successful in their decertification attempts. So what I want to know through this report is what we, what processes we would have to change internally and what kind of legal expense we might have to go through in order for us to challenge our current construction monopoly, which is held by two specific unions here in town. I've said it many times, and I'll say it again, Mr. Mayor, this is not a union versus non, a unionized versus non-union battle. People often misunderstand this issue or misconstrue this issue as someone trying to union bust. That is not what this is. Anyone who says that that's what this is is simply wrong. In the Sioux on municipal construction sites, we are forced, we are in a forced monopoly. The city is restricted as to who it can accept bids from on municipal projects. We are only allowed to accept bids from two unions, the International Brother of Carpenters and Joiners and the, and Leuna. That means that any company in town that uses steelworkers, any company that uses CLAC, any company that uses a shop that is not unionized, or any company that uses a unionized shop that isn't one of those two specific unions is prohibited from us accepting their bid. That means less competition, and some reports say up to a 30% increase in costs. That means often going out of town for work because folks, local folks who own local businesses and pay taxes locally are shut out on city projects. It means that mine and your constituents are shut out on local projects because while they may share the same trade as some of the folks under these unions, they are members of different unions, even though their municipal tax dollars are paying for the jobs that are being done. This is taxpayer money, and we have two obligations. We have an obligation to be responsible with costs so that they aren't inflated, and we have responsibility to ensure everybody is being treated fairly. As it stands now, because of bad provincial legislation and a bad Labor Board decision, we're failing both those responsibilities. So what I'm asking for in this motion, for us to determine what it would take to fix that, and I hope that everybody would support that today, and I also just want to thank the Sewer and Water Main Construction Association, the Sault Ste. Marie Chamber of Commerce, the union, CLAC, the Progressive Contractors Association, and Cardis for all supporting this motion, and obviously I'd ask that this be a protocol.
Okay. I think your motion's very clear, and what you're looking for is also very clear, Counsel Shoemaker. Counsel Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly say upfront that I support it. As Counselor Shoemaker referred to, we brought the first crack at this back in December. Even a few years ago before that, the former council, we had a great discussion, it never came forward in a formal resolution, but we, we, we've been trying to tackle this for several years, so I think we're closer now than ever to at least mine down to see what our options are. But my question, and I called the clerk earlier today to find out actually who, who might best answer this, but I believe if I, and I'm sure Counsel Shoemaker will know the answer, but there are four other municipalities, I believe, who are facing this same status: Hamilton, Greater Toronto, Kitchener, and what are the, so KW region probably, and Hamilton and Toronto. So the obvious to me would be that instead of trying to do it as a one-off, what efforts have we made to link arms with those other, particularly KW, it's a lot bigger than we are, but it's more similar, and Hamilton's similar to us in many other ways. Obviously Toronto's often a world of its own, but I would think that our key to success on this is going to be strength in numbers of some pretty heavy hitters in Southern Ontario, so it's not just some small-town Northern Ontario trying to tackle a giant. So I don't know really who to direct that to, but I suspect Counsel Shoemaker's done some research on that. I don't know who, but I did speak to the clerk earlier today, so he may want to be the one that answers, Mr. Mayor.
I think the CEO is indicating he's going to answer, so we'll give the mic to him.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Myers. Again, this is a report request, and we will take the information that you've just described in terms of the potential of partnering up with other municipalities into the, into account when we go and do the review, so as to bring it back to council to give some indication of what the costs are and what the impacts may or may not be in terms of the, of projects. But again, we will make sure that that's in connection with the four other municipalities that are impacted.
Thank you, because I would think it might be most cost-effective that way as well and greater chance for success. So thank you very much, and again, I strongly support the resolution.
Anybody else to speak for Counsel Buttland?
Yes, Counsel Shoemaker makes a very defensible argument as to why we should proceed, and the silence is deafening on this issue. It's, it's been out there for many, many years, and even when this is now out there, I've not received a call, which is a bit surprising. It shouldn't be surprising.
We should note, the general review received a number of requests to attend and do delegations on it, but because it's a report back, we didn't accept the delegations. We, we had said to the delegates that they could come and make their delegations, their representations when council was making a decision. But there were a number of different parties that did ask to come.
I certainly understand that. I still say it's unusual not to have received an email, a call, a personal intervention from anybody. I think I understand why, but it's time, let's bring this to a head. We're not finalizing the vote, and I look forward to the report, report. Let's bring it to some finalization with a vote when the report comes back. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? The Counsel Shoemaker asked for a recorded vote, so we'll, we'll have that.
Counselor Turco?
Four.
Counselor Fatah?
Four.
Counselor Christian?
Four.
Counselor Hoopinen?
Four.
Counselor Hollinsworth?
Four.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Four.
Counselor Nero?
Four.
Counselor Bruni?
Four.
Counselor Myers?
Four.
Counselor Buttland?
Four.
Mayor Provenciano?
Four.
Motion passes unanimously.
Counsel Bruni, can I ask you to take the chair for a couple minutes? We're on 8.2, council.
Mr. Acting Mayor, members of council, under item 8.2 Splash Pad, a motion by Counselors Myers and Christian. Whereas on August 22nd, 2016, city council passed a resolution brought forward on behalf of the Mayor's Committee on Canada 150, asking staff to look at various means of funding to build a splash pad as the city's community legacy project for Canada 150. And whereas in the staff report to council dated March 20th, 2017, it was indicated that the project cost is approximately $575,000, and the timeline for construction of a splash pad would be dependent upon fundraising and submitting applications to various funding opportunities. And whereas to date, there is about $60,000 committed to this project, including 25,000 of city funds previously approved and with applications underway for additional funding. However, timelines of all funding possibilities are such that it would take at least one more year to align the total funding envelope and thus no longer be a Canada 150 legacy project. Now therefore be it resolved that should council wish to proceed with the building of a splash pad in 2017, staff be directed to report back within one month and identify all possible sources of city funds, including parks, reserves, and include identifying any city assets that could be liquidated with funds used to support the splash pad project. Further be it resolved that all fundraising efforts and applications for funding continue as planned. Susan?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Yeah, the resolution has a fair little bit in it, but I think just to recap, council's fairly aware of this project, and I'm going to turn it over in a minute to the actual Chair of the Subcommittee of Splash Pad, which is Counselor Christian. My role in this is as wearing the hat with Canada 150, Counsel Hoopinen and myself. We have a committee that last year, you know, we brought the report, as we mentioned, in August around this matter, and council then did give us the nod around it being a Canada 150 community legacy project. But the year is half over almost, and we're trying to move forward on this, and what this resolution is really speaking to is something that staff is underway doing. Staff, I believe, through Mr. Vere and Ms. MacLeod, have been looking at various assets and places where we could perhaps liquidate some funds that would go into a reserve and perhaps go towards this project. But the bottom line is, in order to apply for some of the funding that we need to go after, for, for example, the Trillium Foundation and so on, we need some fairly significant cash upfront to do that. And if, we will run, and we've got a number of things underway around fundraising and so on, however, and in-kind and so on, but time is marching. And so if council is serious about wanting to see Canada 150 legacy project, we may be able to make a groundbreaking of Canada 151, July 1st, 2018, if we proceed. And we do know that we have funds already earmarked, I think to the $225,000 as mentioned, that we could begin to do the engineering work. But in doing that, then we want to make that commitment. So where I'm coming from is with our Canada 150 hat on, that we want this as a legacy project for Canada 150. That was something we identified quite some time ago. And then I'm going to actually, as I said, turn it over, Mr. Acting Mayor, please, to the Chair of the Splash Park, Splash Pad Project, Counselor Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Just a couple of quick points. Counselor Myers touched on the key, the key point. From a subcommittee planning perspective, we're well underway, and as she pointed out, we're trying to lever as much donation money and in-kind donations as absolutely possible. So we're not asking council to commit the entire project financially, we're simply asking for vote of confidence to move forward by way of staff looking at potential opportunities to find some funding. A vote to support this tonight is simply a vote to ask for a report. You're not committing to anything. I do want to point out to council that the Splash Pad project was front and center, A Number One on the Parks Master Plan. It's something the community wants. We've already committed to this point to move forward with this splash pad. So I just want to emphasize that this is just asking for a report so that we can make an intelligent decision moving forward as to how we're going to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors? Counsel Fatah?
One question I'm kind of concerned about. I just want to be sure on this. In this report, will we hear about all the individual groups that have either made reference to making a contribution or will be in the future? I think Counsel Myers made reference to, to another group that's looking at making, are we going to get a clear picture as who's still on board as far as making a contribution?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, I would suggest the Chair of the committee answers that.
We, our intent would be to, to let council know the, the progress of the planning. The report we're asking for, I think, is independent of what you're asking for, Counsel Fatah, but by all means, as we start shoring up commitments from the community, we'll be happy to bring them forward.
If I may just follow up on this, yeah, there's been reference to the location of this splash pad, and I, and I think that it would be, I would think it would be important for us to, to listen to those comments and those inputs as far as talking about whether , I know that we voted on the Bellevue Park site, I understand that, but there's been discussion in the recent past, I'm sure most of you have been involved in those discussions where other locations have been, been brought up. Is that still an area that we can entertain? Or are we done with the fact that we voted for Bellevue Park? I just want to be clear on that.
Counselor Christian will respond to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Acting Mayor, the, the decision by council was to move forward with Bellevue Park. Of course, there's talk in the community, or at least there has been some minor talk, but that's not a decision that council is willing to entertain unless it comes forward as a reconsideration motion. And no one, no one has approached me with that, and it was pretty clear at the meeting where we voted on it that Bellevue- where we voted on it, that Bellevue was the preferred choice by the community and by council for all the reasons that make it the best choice, not the least of which is the fact that we have infrastructure there, we have an issue with density, we already have equipment there. It's much, much easier to tie into the infrastructure there. So there are financial reasons, there are aesthetic reasons, there are just practical expansion reasons why Bellevue Park's the best, but at this point, there's, there's no intent to bring it forward to council because council's already voted on it.
Can I add on comments on this?
I'm just going to add something.
Well, I'll wait for my...
Yeah, and I'll just mine a little further on that. I believe that when staff presented to the subcommittee our initial reports of research that was done around the two sites, there was a difference of close to three hundred thousand dollars in the two sites because of the lack of current infrastructure at Clerc. Clerc was the other site. I believe it was tickling eight hundred thousand plus, so it's a couple of hundred thousand dollars difference. I know I'm looking at Virginia, and she's shaking her head at me, so I may have that wrong, but there was a cost difference because we're building on existing infrastructure. Maybe we should let her take the mic. But there was a difference there.
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to councillor Myers. There was definitely a cost difference. It was going to be more expensive to run the infrastructure to the location at Clerc Park. So that was about forty thousand into just additional infrastructure. Where the savings came in was also on the operational side, because we do have staff at the Bellevue Park site. So on an annual basis, there was savings because we have staff there. We didn't have to bring as many additional staff in to help maintain the new facility if it were to be located at Clerc. So both capital as well as operational savings.
Thank you. For councillors, no, we should be sticking to the resolution that's in front of us and not about if we're moving the splash pad from one area to another area. Is there any other questions from councillors? I have one, and maybe Larry or Virginia can answer. This is such a short notice, if, if it comes back to council by the end of June, can a splash pad park be built in such a short period of time?
Eighteen, we're talking eighteen.
We're talking about eighteen right now, not...
Not seventeen.
Okay. Then don't worry about it.
Hundred, Canada one fifty-one.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes?
I think citing a project that basically highlights our birthday, our hundred-fiftieth anniversary is excellent. And I heard, talking to my fellow council warty, that I think many other cities across Canada have started projects to celebrate and really to emphasize the hundred-fiftieth anniversary. Not to be negative, but if hypothetically, we cannot secure the funding, out of curiosity, does the committee have another project as plan B that might still be showing our support for our hundred-fiftieth anniversary?
Well, we're kind of swaying off now on the resolution.
That's true.
I'm sorry, but we should stick with the resolution that's in front of us, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Any questions, any other questions? Vote? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Mr. Mayor, members of council, under agenda item eight point three, cost recovery for fire services, a motion by councillors Shoemaker and Christian. Whereas fire departments across Ontario have cost recovery bylaws that charge the end user of the fire department's service for the cost of said service, and whereas such cost recovery models typically apply to fire service attendants at motor vehicle collisions, fire investigations, among others. And whereas to varying degrees, the following municipalities all have fire services cost recovery bylaws: Thunder Bay, Mississauga, Oshawa, Barry, Niagara Falls, London. And whereas in many cases, the responsible party's insurance company is responsible for the payment of the fire services invoice. Now therefore be it resolved that appropriate staff report to council outlining, one, a list of cities in Ontario that have cost recovery fire services bylaws; two, a compilation of what services are charged for in which cities and how much each service is charged out at; three, an analysis of what percentage of calls from those municipalities with cost recovery bylaws that are chargeable calls versus non-chargeable calls; four, what the revenue has been for municipalities who charge for such services, broken down by service; and five, any limitations imposed by bylaw, by law, on what types of services can be cost recovered by the municipality and the amounts that may be charged; and six, an estimate of the potential revenue the city of Sault Ste. Marie could expect if it imposes a bylaw similar to those in other municipalities in Ontario that have cost recovery fire services bylaws in effect.
Councillor Shoemaker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was, I'm grateful to a constituent who emailed me a copy of the Mississauga cost recovery bylaw, which is very succinct and very clear on what it charges for, what it doesn't charge for. And so then I started, you know, doing my own research, and I noticed this just came up at a Thunder Bay meeting, at their last council meeting. So this is a situation where there is insurance money typically available for these types of things. So if there's a motor vehicle collision, for example, and the fire department has to show up and use spill absorbent, well, there's a cost associated with using that spill absorbent. There could be insurance money available to pay the fire department back for the cost of that spill absorbent. And you're already paying insurance anyways, and so there's perhaps untapped money there that could be coming to the municipality to reduce the burden on taxpayers, because right now, that, the cost of all that, all that, you know, and this isn't just about spill absorbent, but there's sort of a wide variety of services and, and materials that can be recovered for. The cost of all that is just being borne by the general tax base. So I'm asking that we look at what other municipalities are doing. It was quite common when I did in fact look into it, see how we can best ease the burden on, on the general tax base and recover money that's potentially going unrecovered right now. So it is my hope that this can be looked at, see what host of services there can be cost recovery for, if there are any prohibitions on recovering for specific services through either home insurance, car insurance, whatever the case might be, and see if that we can, you know, somehow help, help ease the tax burden by charging for things that, you know, it won't have to be the, the persons already paying for their insurance, so it would be something that they get as a service from their insurance company.
Councillor Christian?
Very quickly, I just, I was willing to support, second this resolution on the spirit that, as councillor Shoemaker pointed out, it might be an opportunity to relieve the burden, although minor, with the taxpayer, if, if we can, you know, recover some of this through insurance. I'm very leery about looking at cost recovery for other services offered by fire services, but if we could, I would certainly support anything in the future that would allow us to look at insurances as a, as possible way of recovering some of our money. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Motion's carried.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under agenda item eight point four, Norant Resources visit, motion by councillors Shoemaker and Butland. Whereas on May tenth, two thousand and seventeen, executives from Norant Resources were in Sault Ste. Marie to discuss development of the Ring of Fire mineral deposits and their desire to build a smelter in Northern Ontario. And whereas Sault Ste. Marie is grateful that Norant is considering it as a potential location for the ferrochrome plant. And whereas the council of the city of Sault Ste. Marie thanks the Economic Development Corporation for their pursuit of this project, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Sault Ste. Marie thanks Norant Resources for their interest in our community. And further be it resolved that the council of the city of Sault Ste. Marie looks forward to working with Norant to ensure that Sault Ste. Marie is their location of choice for their smelter.
Councillor Shoemaker, your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you councillor Butland. I think we're working well on this motion together. This, May tenth, Norant was here, they did an excellent presentation to the Chamber of Commerce. I had the good fortune of being able to attend. Councillor Butland, I know, was there as well. I think councillor Fata was there as well. This is a great opportu, great potential opportunity. If our, you know, I mean, if our city could, could land this, and the work that EDC is doing here is great, I know your office is doing great work on this, Mr. Mayor, this represent, represents a significant opportunity for our municipality if it comes to fruition. So we wanted to let them know, we're very grateful that they're considering us as one of the sites for the, one of the potential sites for the smelter, and if there is anything that our council can do to facilitate that, that search process, I, I know that we would endorse it wholeheartedly, because we talk about economic diversification, this is economic diversification, you know, as clear as it gets. So I'm grateful that they came, I'm grateful that they considered us, or that they are considering us, I should say, and I am hopeful that we will be, and we will be and remain high on their list as, as their consideration gets, you know, closer to a decision, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Butland?
Yes, councillor Shoemaker and I were at the, the presentation, I understand councillor Fata was there, and councillor Shoemaker and I talked a fair amount, we most often agree to disagree, but there are certain issues that we, we come together on, and this one is, again, could be a game changer. It's absolutely massive in, in potential, excuse me. And when I attended, I had to leave just a bit early, my question would have been, there are four cities in, in, basically in the running for this, for this project, and you say, well, Sudbury probably, Sudbury and Timmins probably have an edge in mining background. Sault Ste. Marie, our location is fan, just the best of all four for this particular project. We have a tentative port, but I talked to one of the principals who made the presentation and talked about Sault Ste. Marie specifically, and I said, he said, "Well, your EDC is doing a yeoman job of presenting your, Sault Ste. Marie's position on this and putting its best foot forward." I said, "Are there any, is there anything that we can do more than we're already doing? Do we have any advantage?" And his point, not my point or anybody else's point, he said, "You have the energy, the power, that the other municipalities don't have." So we do have a leg up, and we have to attempt to ensure that we keep that leg up. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
So we have councillor Hoopanen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, just a quick question, do we have any idea when this decision will be made?
Yeah, so I spent a bit of time on this project, and I wasn't able to make that meeting, site of meeting with the OLG executive at the same time, but I met with the two gentlemen the hour before the luncheon. And this, this is, certainly Norant is looking for some immediate activity on the road. That's the next big piece of this puzzle that they need to see solved, is that we need a road into the, the system and where the, the resource is. And you won't see any significant plans or investments move ahead until that that road is, is essentially committed to and established. So there are some political issues that relate to that, something that we've been working on through Nolam and certainly been lobbying for. So this is a more of a mid to long-term project, but Norant has the interest in the chromite. It, when the, when the road goes in and the chromite goes out, comes out, it's going to be a number of years before that happens, but it has to go somewhere. And we went from not being in consideration to being, you know, at the top of the consideration. One of the, the strategic advantages is the location, as councillor Butland said, another is the access to the powers, councillor Butland said, another is the, the laydown areas that we have for the byproduct, and because, and we have expertise in that respect. They really want a brownfield site, and we have access to a pretty substantial brownfield site. So there's a lot of dynamics that still have to work out, but I think this is a good example of a project that's top of mind and that people are working together on, and we're going to keep on focused on it, moving ahead, and, and I'm in pretty consistent communication with the executives at Norant that were up here, and I think they'll look on this motion very favorably, and we'll just, I asked the same question councillor Butland did, which was, what do we need to do to, to make sure we stay, you know, in consideration on this and, and keep working with you? And the answer was, keep doing what you're doing. So, so we'll keep you updated and we'll keep on it, and it's a fairly complex process, and we'll have to move a few yardsticks first, but it's certainly something we're in the mix on very, very significantly.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Carried unanimously.
Under agenda item eight point five, tax incentives, a motion by councillors Christian and Butland. Whereas the population of Northern, Northern Ontario continues to decline, and whereas the net outmigration of young people and skilled labor will negatively impact the long-term economic viability and general social conditions of the North, and whereas areas within Southern Ontario, particularly in and around the Greater Toronto Area, continue to experience unprecedented growth and skyrocketing real estate values, and whereas it has become very expensive and virtually impossible for many to live and work in these areas of explosive growth, and whereas Northern Ontario has surplus infrastructure and represents an affordable alternative for residents, business, and governments. Now therefore be it resolved that city council propose that the provincial government undertake appropriate actions through tax reductions, tax exemptions, and relocation initiatives to stop the continuing population decline in Northern Ontario by creating incentives for business, institutions, and government departments to operate in Northern Ontario. And further, that staff be directed to forward this resolution to the premier's office, the three local provincial by-election candidates, PHNOM and Nolam representatives.
So councillor Christian, the only comment I would have is, I think we should just amend the motion just to say all the by-election candidates, because we have...
Yes, you're absolutely right, my apology.
We have more than three.
Yes. My apologies for that oversight.
Okay, so go, you take it away, councillor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Listen, I want to begin by saying if it was up to me, I'd offer tax incentives as a city council, councillor, to any op, any potential business that would be willing to move to Sault Ste. Marie. Last meeting, I moved a resolution asking staff to consider expanding the reach of the proposed CIP program to include industrial, commercial, and retail locations. That's, under the municipal act, that's one of the few tools we have to incent business to invest. So we as a council, though, really don't have the authority to be aggressive in terms of seeking business investment by way of tax incentives or tax holidays. The provincial government has that power. The province just announced their new growth plan in the Greater Golden Horseshoe, and somehow, over the next twenty-five years, the province is begging the, the area to try to find room for four point two million more people. So on one hand, you have explosive growth in Southern Ontario, escalating costs of living, they're running out of room down there, and the North continues to, to shrink and be shorted. So it, listen, I'm, I'm, I'm not naive to think that a resolution from Sault Ste. Marie council is going to move the province into action, but I do think it's time that we as a council endorse an idea like this and pass it on to our northern neighbors, and collectively as a group, we need to ask for the obvious. There's an opportunity for the province to do the right thing, not only to help stimulate growth in the North, but to somehow take a stab at solving the problems they have in Southern Ontario. So, you know, it, it really is in the best interests of the problem, province to do it. It's going to keep Ontario businesses competitive if you offer tax incentives. It's going to be an investment in the future of the North, which is really, really important. It's not about creating new competition for existing businesses in the North. I would think a, an intelligent and thought-out plan would include incentives for businesses that would be new to the North so that they would complement the existing business profile we have. so that they would complement the existing business profile we have here now. We need to do something and we as a council need to take this step. We can't, we can't offer tax holidays, but we need to speak for the community. So, I appeal to everybody to look at this. The province needs to invest in our future. Otherwise, they're going to be subsidizing our social programs in the future. They can, they can invest now or subsidize later. Thanks.
Councillor Myers?
Certainly support this fully. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess that, what came to my mind is I think that that the province has tiptoed into some of these areas. I think of the physician recruitment and underserviced areas that have been identified in physician recruitment and the incentives that the province provides within healthcare for addressing that issue. So, I think it behooves us to flag this as an issue. We can't assume that they understand our situation or know what our challenges are. So, I strongly support it. And I thank councillor Christian and Butland for bringing this forward. I think that, again, I don't think it should be that huge a stretch for them. There, there are other programs that have been identified across this province. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, councillor Butland?
Yes, I support the resolution of course. And I, again, I wouldn't expect immediate action from our, particularly our, our southern neighbours in in Southern Ontario. So, this would be a tough one for AMO to get behind. It was interesting to, they had a ministers' gathering in in North Bay, and the very same question was asked of the ministers present. And to a person, they said, gee, we're not sure what to do about this. You know, it's an issue and they weren't sure. They said, we have to talk more about the, the quality of life and the advantages of living in in Northern Ontario. And they point out, small town Canada shares in this dilemma. You know, it's not just in Ontario, it's, it's across Canada. But I think putting it on the table and saying, hey, take a look at this. Is there any other way? And I hearken back for those of us who've been around a while. OLG, Premier Peterson of the time said, we're going to relocate some provincial offices in Northern Ontario. We received OLG. And at the time, it was a tremendous charge to get people from Southern Ontario to come to, why am I going to Sault Ste. Marie? You know, I'm there in, in the boondocks and my wife has a job in Southern Ontario. And we had, they had a heck of a time recruiting. But once the people got here, I'd like to think, the majority of the I spoke to were very, very happy. And the president of PHNOM pointed that out. That is something that could very easily be done. Whether there's an appetite to do that or not, I don't know. But I think councillor Christian is right. Let's put this on the table. Let's get them to talk about it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, councillor Hollingsworth.
I just want to say to councillor Christian and councillor Butland, well done. This is dead on excellent, excellent resolution. And I hope that as a council group, we will see more of these type of resolutions coming to our table as we continue to highlight the economic side of our city. So, I just want to say, I support this greatly. And maybe down the road, we can talk about going back to the province and start focusing on transportation as the next piece with regards to freight, highways and so forth.
Recorded vote, okay. Anybody else? Mr. Clerk, recorded vote.
A recorded vote has been requested. Councillor Butland?
Four.
Councillor Myers?
Four.
Councillor Bruni?
Four.
Councillor Nero?
Four.
Councillor Shoemaker?
Four.
Councillor Hollingsworth?
Four.
Councillor Hoopanen?
Four.
Councillor Christian?
Four.
Councillor Fatta?
Four.
Councillor Turkel?
Four.
Mayor Provenzano?
Four.
Houses unanimously. Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this brings us to the bylaw portion of the agenda. Because of pecuniary interests, we need to vote on two of the bylaws separately. Agenda item 11.1.6, motion by councillors Myers and Fatta, resolve the bylaw 2017-105 being a bylaw to appoint municipal law enforcement officers to enforce the bylaws on various private properties and to amend Schedule 8 to bylaw 9305, be passed in open council this 29th day of May 2017.
All in favor? Carrie.
Agenda 11, agenda item 11.1.17, motion by councillors Myers and Fatta, resolve the bylaw 2017-116 being a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract between the city and Avery Construction Limited for the reconstruction of Gray Street from Bruce Street to Elgin Street, contract 2017-4E, be passed in open council this 29th day of May 2017.
All in favor? Carrie, Carrie.
Motion by councillors Bruni and Myers, resolve that all bylaws under item 11 of the agenda under date 2017-0529 be approved, save and accept 2017-105 and 2017-116.
Councillor Shoemaker has a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to bylaw 1, 11.1.4, this is the tax ratios bylaw. I know we had a report on this at the last council agenda, but I'm-
I think two councils-
Was it two council agendas ago? I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around. I know that we said that there was a 50 some percent increase for large industrial. But because of tax capping and clawback-
Capping, yeah.
What does that mean the actual increase is going to be this year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. Excuse me, I don't have those numbers in front of me. But because we use revenue neutral tax ratios, that means that tax burden paid by each property class remains the same. So, basically, they'll be fairly consistent with what they paid last year regardless of what the assessment was in the large industrial tax class.
We can get you that information councillor Shoemaker, but the, the end result is they're not paying more taxes relative to what the percentage is.
So, I just, is it, but if their, their rate is increasing, but not the amount that they actually pay? Am I, is it, is that about right?
Generally, the dollar amount that they will pay will be consistent with what they paid last year.
Subject to a percentage, a relatively minor percentage change, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. But it's the actual rate of 0.11300, whatever that is, that'll increase by X number of percentage. Is that correct?
I, can you repeat?
Or have I lost you on that?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you-
What he's asking is it's the actual, it's not the gross dollars of taxes that increases by the percentage. It's the actual rate. So, it's 0.001 to 0.002 as an example is what he's asking.
Yes, the tax rate will increase because of the assessment, but in the end, it's the same dollar amount. Assessment decreased, tax rate increases, same dollar.
Gotcha. And, but if the assessment decreased for one taxpayer in that class and not for the others, does it not have the effect of increasing their taxes by, you know, 50% in essence?
That's when capping would kick in.
Okay. And-
Because, so you don't want that to happen to people in the tax class. So, it's, their increase is capped.
But over time, that's the effect, right?
The effect, we increase 5% per year. So, what happens, as the mayor has indicated, tax capping and clawback protects within the class when there's an assessment shift, as was in the large industrial. So, if a individual taxpayer in that class had a significant decrease, they wouldn't realize that significant decrease. And it would protect the, it from being transferred to the others. But it will be phased in gradually at 5% per year.
So, the, yeah, over a long period of time, the end result is that their amount goes up by, say, 50% in this case.
Provided the rate doesn't change.
And if the assessment-
The rates are set annually, yeah, they're set annually. The assessment and the rates are determined annually. So, if we held that rate for a long period of time, that percentage, that percentage would be implemented over a long period of time.
Right, so-
Thank, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. And again, the reverse is true. So, if it is that they go up in the terms of their assessment, then it goes down. So, there's going to be others in the, in the category that could go up. So, it's not as simple as, as just like straight line changes. It's relative to the whole of, I call it the balloon of what is assessment and what goes up and down within that balloon. When a bubble happens here, gets pushed in, it creates another bubble over there. But the, the amount of air in the balloon stays the same. The tax levy that's being looked for in terms of the amount of money needed to be able to have an operating budget for this current year, that levy amount is the same. It doesn't change.
Okay. So, the other, my last question on this is, if this were left, everything being the same for, you know, whatever it is, 20, 30 years, in effect, the capping would achieve the 50%. You know, the, over the long term, they'd end up paying 50% more, but at 5% increments over a number of years, all things being equal.
Assuming their assessment stayed the same, yes.
Right. But if in, say, year two or three or whatever, we have a, you know, we've suddenly come into a big surplus, can we change the way this is and can we reduce the overall amount that this whole class is paying?
Yes, we set the rates every year.
Okay.
And we do have a long term tax policy that we follow. So, again, we would assess whether we use revenue neutral, whether we use the starting ratios or an alternate ratio which can move towards the range of fairness.
And that's what you'd be doing. You'd be adjusting the ratio vis a vis the large industrial to the remainder of the classes.
Right.
So, if you found a million dollars, you could use that million dollars to adjust the ratio.
Right, okay. That seems to make some sense.
Councillor Bruni?
And hopefully Shelley can walk me through it. For instance, if we use the large industrial occupied, and I'll just read the first four numbers. For instance, in 2016, it was 0.0744. Now, for 2017, it's going to be at 0.1166, according to the, our, the information that we've gathered.
Okay.
To me, that's an increase.
But that's applied to a number councillor Bruni, right? So, let's just take it this way. Let's say if my house is assessed at $100,000 and my rate is 1%, then I pay $1,000. If my house was assessed at $50,000 and my rate was 1%, I'd pay $500. But if you increased my rate to 2%, I'd pay the $1,000 again. So, this number, 0.0744 and 0.1166, they don't mean anything until we apply them to the assessed value. So, if we had a large industrial property that recently went under a reassessment and their value significantly dropped, right? The assessed rate, like the rate that we're applying to their assessment, is going up to collect a similar amount of tax.
Yeah.
So, but that, and that's why they fluctuate every year is because the prop, the price of the property, the value of the property's been fluctuating. And what we've been experiencing here in Northern Ontario and in Sault Ste. Marie is, the value of our industrial property isn't going up, it's going down.
But as councillor Shoemaker said, if, and I think Shelley, five, it'll go up 5%.
So- That's the maximum you can do on, that's the maximum you can have it go up.
So, in a five year period, it could go up 25%.
But we do this every year.
You'll do it every year.
But we do do it every year.
Yeah.
So, will we revisit this next year again? So, if, if, well, and it was reported, SR recently reported that they had a decrease in their assessment.
Yes.
So, their assessment decreases. And if you look at it, look at it this way. When, when, when the SR companies bought SR in 2007 or '08, I think it was, they were paying $8.2 million in tax. I think their current tax bill is approximately 6.5 or somewhere in that neighborhood. So, they're paying $1.7 million less in tax now than they were then, but their rate's higher. Their rate's higher because the value of their property has decreased. So, in the end, just because your rate goes up 50%, it doesn't actually mean that you're paying more taxes. You might be. But the reason why they have these interclass mechanisms is that, so we don't have this unfairness. Let's say if a large, large industrial employer's property value drops and we apply the same rate to the whole class, well, that's going to be unfair to someone whose, whose property value didn't drop. So, then you cap that increase so they don't see a dramatic increase in their tax bill. And that's, that's a matter of regulation.
So, worst case scenario, a 5% increase. Worst case scenario.
You can't say that overall because, again, it depends on what happened within the large industrial class. Some went up, some went down. So, the 5% is the overall increase that'll go to the decresers. But you have to blend the whole thing. It's, it's a mathematical formula. So, I can't say carte blanche that everybody is going to be 5%, 10%. I can tell you though, that the large industrial class is paying the same percentage tax burden as they did in 2016.
Yeah. Just, yeah. This is how it's been done every year councillor Bruni. This isn't new.
I just have a request perhaps for a future council meeting. I know there's only, I don't know, five or six or seven people in the large industrial class. Would it be possible to have what they were paying last year, dollar amount compared to what they were paying this year, but not the actual, not, not identifying, just, you know, business one, business two?
We, we don't do that. So, like, I think it's most appropriate, like, if you set up meetings with the, the treasurer and go through that. If you'd like, she'll sit down with you and go through the numbers with you. I've, I've done this with her and she's very happy to do it. But we don't talk about who pays what in, in tax unless it's already a public matter.
Okay. I can do that, sure.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker, to council at large. You might recall about nine months ago, in, in one of our budget deliberations, we brought forward a little video that was created by Niagara Region that explained this sort of at, in a high level terms, just looking at specific households, how the whole sort of mechanism worked. That is posted on our website. So, if there are members of the council and or the audience at home that are interested, they're welcome to go to the website and pull that video up. And I, and I think, I, I myself, and I've worked in, in this field for a long time, still found it very helpful to bring it back to something that's a little bit more clarity to it because it can get quite complicated at times. So, I encourage anyone that's interested that they look at that video that's currently posted on our website.
Okay, all in favor of the bylaws? Carrie.
Agenda item 13, closed session, a motion by councillors Bruni and Hollingsworth, resolve that this council proceed into closed session to discuss an issue under the Companies Creditors Arrangement Act. And further be it resolved that should the said closed session be adjourned, the council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same matter without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? Carrie.
A motion by councillors Fatt and Hollingsworth, resolve that this council shall now adjourn.
All in favor? Carrie. Carrie.